Morning. County Montgomery Annual Town Meeting 2018. The legal voters in the County of Montgomery and the County of Franklin are hereby notified and sworn to leave the town hall instead town on Tuesday, the sixth day of March 2018 A.D. at nine o'clock in the forenoon to act on the following business: to which elect the moderator for the ensuing year. Are there nominations?
Ms. Murphy and Murphy.
Ms. Murphy is the nominee. Are there nominations? Anywhere, if there are no other nominations and there is no objection, we will cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. You've nominated Ms. Murphy for whom to serve as the moderator. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and you would elect Ms. Murphy to serve as your moderator for the coming year. Thank you. There's a few announcements I'd like to make here. Non-residents, you certainly witnessed our proceedings, but they do not have the right to participate by blocking the voting. If you are a resident and if not yet resident to vote, you can do so today by coming forward and presenting a proposal I.D. It's a little different today because we are going to have a person participate who was not in the room. We've set up a Skype circuit and he can participate, he can ask questions, he can vote. I would ask that those of you making comments or doing whatever you're doing out in the assembly, please use the microphone so that he will be able to hear what we are talking about. And other than that, we'll see how it goes and hopefully it will not be disruptive of our proceedings. Finally, there are some goodies in the back. They've all been donated by fellow townspeople. Please enjoy and let's get on with this. I've noticed that our state representative Cindy Wee is in attendance. If there is no, she's not a member, a resident of our town, but if there is no objection, we can allow her to add a few words. Is there any objection? No objection having been heard. Cindy, care to address the crowd? Toss a glass of wine.
Hi. This is not armed. Hello.
Hi.
Just here to say hello. I have created a little report that's talking about what I'm doing in my committee and what we're doing in the State House. My committee government operations deals with municipal and state government, so I certainly have interaction with your select board and your town clerk. They've come to the State House too and they're a great resource. In the State House, we're working on redoing the education funding, trying to change the way that that's done to make it more affordable for people. And we're also working on some safety issues. So we're just getting going as we go to act after our vacation is when things really heat up. So please, if you have any questions, please contact me. I have a lot more room to talk to you folks. Don't get that many calls. And we're also having a legislative breakfast on St. Patrick's Day in Ennisburg at nine o'clock, so please try to come to that. And I think that's it.
Article two, accept reports of town officers. So moved or seconded? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we accept the reports of the town officers in a discussion? Chair?
One correction to be made under item five L, a library trustee. It should read Burl Van Giesen nominated Patricia Hathaway.
Oh, this is?
Oh, I know.
This is, this is in the minute, I'm sorry, the minute of last year's meeting.
Page number?
Uh, page ten. Item five L. It should read Patricia Hathaway.
She's already, she's nominated and we are, uh, okay. She's nominated for a whistle. She's it.
Oh, and she was, oh.
Cheryl Whistle.
Okay. Okay, I apologize. It should read nominated Cheryl Whistle and then strike Patricia Hathaway and then Cheryl Whistle's name there instead.
Any other discussion on reports of the town officers?
I have a question.
When you're recognized, please stand and state your name for your record and for our residents who is not here.
I need a word. I have some questions on page twenty-eight.
Page twenty-eight of the proposed budget percentage breakout. Line item nine, the highways. If you look at page twenty-six on line item eighty-two, I believe that should be four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand instead of four-eighty-eight.
Could you repeat those references?
Can I sit down?
Yes.
Okay. So on the highways, it says that four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. The fill-up crack on page twenty-six on line item eighty-two, it should be four-four-eight-seven-hundred-thousand.
Oh, you were correct. Thank you.
Okay, that changes your percentage to thirty-eight percent.
Okay.
I have some police services, it says a thousand dollars, it should be zero, reporting to line item one-on-eleven on page twenty-seven.
So I believe that was kind of for the minus.
I wasn't part of the conversation. Please, I was ready to, uh, have a second.
I think that maybe the label might be misleading, but there would still be a thousand dollars attributed to the constable's services for the year, so the correlation might be off. That's where that number came from.
Okay. If that's not four-eighty, we just need to get that to the numbers. Uh, the eight-eight thousand in fill-up crack on page twenty-seven on line one-zero-eight, it should be a hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-zero-pang-one.
Okay. That can be amended. Okay. Thank you very much.
Can you repeat that?
So that would be amending page twenty-eight, line eighteen, the number would be one-twenty-nine-zero-two-nine, adjusting the percentage to eleven percent.
Other comments on the reports of the town officers? Chair?
Titus Pressler.
Please state your name.
Titus Pressler. I would just like to note that the report of the Hill West Cemetery Association was inadvertently omitted from the town report and the town clerk has kindly provided copies of it on the back table that people can pick up.
Thank you. Other comments or questions about the town reports? If not, we can vote on this. If there's no objection, no objection having been heard. Excuse me?
Should the amendment be cited?
Aye.
Is there amendment on the floor?
May changes do it.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a change is made.
Do you want to list your amendments then? And corrections up here? Well, let's have an amendment then.
Okay, then the amendment would be to, uh, page eighteen, uh, sorry, page, oh yeah, I'm looking at the wording now, minutes. Uh, well, first you have to do the minutes, right? Page ten. Page ten, item five L, I'm sorry, L, item five K, should be amended, striking Patricia's name and adding Cheryl's name. And then on page twenty-eight?
It is L. It was L.
Okay, it is L. And then on page twenty-eight, amending line nine to read four-four-eight-seven-hundred, percentage reading to thirty-eight percent. Line eighteen, amending the number to one-twenty-nine-zero-two-nine, changing to eleven percent.
Moved and seconded to amend the county courts. All those in favor of amending the county courts as read, you say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no. It's been amended. All those in favor of accepting the town, the reports of the town officers as amended, please say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no. We voted to accept the reports of the town officers as amended. Article three, to elect remaining town officers as required by law. Three A, a select person for a term of two years by ballot. Nominations, please.
Leanne Barnard.
Leanne is denominated. Other nominations? For a select person for a term of two years by ballot? Anywhere? Anywhere? If there are no further nominations and if there is no objection, we can proceed without having to go through the ordeal of a ballot vote by directing the town clerk to pass, to pass one ballot for Leanne Barnard. All those in favor of that procedure, please say aye?
Aye.
If we can direct the town clerk, the ayes have it, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Leanne Barnard as a select person for two years by ballot.
Yes.
One ballot having been cast, we elected Leanne Barnard as a select person for a term of two years by ballot. Three B, a select person for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations, please.
Leanne Marc-Riet.
Marc-Riet. Other nominations? For a select person for a term of three years? Anywhere? If there are no further nominations and if there is no objection, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Marc-Riet for a select person for a term of three years. Any objections? No objections having been heard, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Marc-Riet. Ballot having been cast, we elected Marc-Riet to serve as our select person for a term of three years. Article three C, a town clerk for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations, please.
Leanne De Robitaille.
Leanne De Robitaille is denominated. Other nominations? For a town clerk, any nominations anywhere? If there are no objections, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for the town clerk. No objection now having been heard. Any objections anywhere? No objection having been heard. We can direct Leanne to cast one ballot for Leanne. One ballot having been cast, we have elected Leanne De Robitaille to serve as our current town clerk for a term of three years. A town treasurer and collector of current taxes for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations, please. Leanne is denominated. Other nominations? Anywhere? If not, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Leanne as town treasurer and collector of current taxes. If there are no objections, no objection having been heard, we can direct Leanne to cast one ballot for Leanne De Robitaille as town treasurer and collector of current taxes for a term of three years by ballot. One ballot having been cast, we've elected Leanne De Robitaille to serve as our town treasurer and collector of current taxes for a term of three years. A lister for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations, please.
I nominate Linda Kluba.
Linda Kluba is denominated. Other nominations? Anywhere? If there is no objection, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Linda Kluba to serve as a lister. No objection having been heard, we'll direct Leanne to cast one ballot for Linda Kluba to serve as a lister for a term of three years. One ballot having been cast, we've had elected Linda Kluba to serve as our, as a lister for a term of three years. Article three F, a first constable for a term of one year. Nominations, please.
Brent Godin.
Brent Godin has been nominated. Other nominations? Anywhere? If there are no further nominations, I can cease the nominating procedure. All those in favor of having Brent Godin serve as your constable for a term of one year, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected Brent Godin to serve as our first constable. Article three G, an agent to prosecute and defend suits in which the town is interested for a term of one year. Nominations, please.
Barry Cade.
Barry Cade is denominated. Other nominations?
Yeah.
Anywhere? If there are no further nominations and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No nominations having been heard. All those in favor of having Barry Cade serve as your agent to prosecute and defend suits in which the town is interested for a term of one year, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected Barry Cade to serve as our town agent for one year. Article three H, one or more grand jurors for a term of one year. Nominations, please.
I nominate Stan Ford.
Stan Ford has been nominated. Other nominations?
I.
No other nominations having been heard. If there's no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objections having been heard. All those in favor of having the select board serve as our grand jurors for a term of one year, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've chosen to have our, our select board serve as our grand jurors for a term of one year. Article three I, a cemetery commissioner for the Center Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Nominations, please.
I nominate Linda Kluba.
Linda Kluba is denominated. Other nominations? Anywhere? If there are no further nominations and if there is no objection, we can stop the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of Linda Kluba serving as a cemetery commissioner for the Center Cemetery Association for a term of five years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected Linda Kluba to serve as a cemetery commissioner for the Center Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Article three J, a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Nominations, please.
I nominate Joy Mosley.
Other nomination? Joy Mosley is denominated. Other nominations? If there are no other nominations, if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Joy Mosley serve as a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of five years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected Joy Mosley to serve as the cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Article three K, a library trustee for a term of five years. Nominations, please.
I can skip L and M for all these three years.
Excuse me?
I can skip L and M for all these three years.
Yeah, it's good for your, can you move to, or move to left for a second?
I have a change. Why don't we make a motion to suspend the rules and change the numbers, the years on K, L, and M? Is that what we're, we need to do?
Yeah.
Can you make a motion to suspend the rules?
Go.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules so that we may change the yearly terms on items three K, L, and M from five years to three years. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, if there's no objection, we can go right to the vote. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules in order to change the terms on items three K, L, and M, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. I believe we have passed that threshold. So the, the item before us is to change, we've suspended the rules in order to change the terms from five years to three years on items three K, L, and M. Any discussion? Questions or debate? If not, if there's no objection, we can move to the vote. No objection having been heard. The article on the floor is to change the term on article three K, L, and M from five years to three years. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. We did, we successfully changed the terms on article three K, L, and M from five years to three years. So, from article three K, a library trustee for a term of three years. Nominations, please. Patty Pearl been nominated. Other nominations? No nominations having been heard. If there is objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Patty Pearl serve as a library trustee for a term of three years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. We've elected Patty Pearl to serve as a library trustee for a term of three years. Article three L, a library trustee for a term of three years. Nominations, please.
Claire Draper.
Excuse me?
Claire Draper.
Claire Draper. Other nominations? If there are no other nominations and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of choosing Claire Draper to serve as a library trustee for a term of three years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we'd like Claire Draper to serve as a library trustee for a term of three years. Article three M, a library trustee for a term of three years.
Rita Halssmith.
Rita Halssmith's been nominated. Other nominations? Anywhere? If not, and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Rita Halssmith serve as a library trustee for a term of three years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we'd like Rita Halssmith to serve as a library trustee for a term of three years. Article three N, a fire commissioner for a term of two years. Nominations, please.
I nominate William Baker Sr.
William Baker Sr. is denominated. Other nominations? If there are no further nominations and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of having William Baker Sr. serve as fire commissioner for a term of two years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected William Baker Sr. to serve as our fire commissioner for a term of two years. Article three N, a planning commission member for a term of three years.
I nominate Kenny Miller.
Kenny, Kenny Miller has been nominated. Other nominations? If not, and if there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of having Kenneth Miller serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected Kenneth Miller to serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years. Article three P, a planning commission member for a term of three years. Nominations, please.
Barry Cade.
Barry Cade is denominated. Other nominations? If not, if there's no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of Barry Cade serving as a planning commission member for a term of three years, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've elected Barry Cade to serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years. Article four, shall the town authorize the elimination of the police constable operating reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund? All future expenditures paid through the general fund, town officers. Is there?
I nominate the motion to authorize the elimination.
It's been so moved. Is there a second?
No.
Removed and seconded that the town authorize elimination of the police constable operating reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund. All future expenditures paid through the general fund. Any discussion? is why it is being moved to a, to the reserve fund and not being, why did it move from the reserve fund to the general fund and why does not it get accepted? Chair?
I can attempt to answer that. So this reserve fund was initially established through money that the town received specifically to pay for police services. After the town eliminated that position, the fund remained and has since been drawn down to almost zero. So with that fund now being essentially zero, we're moving to eliminate it. There's no dedicated fund left in the fund itself.
Other questions, comments, debate? If not, we can move this to the vote. It's removed and seconded that the town authorize elimination of the police constable operating reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund. All future expenditures paid through the general fund. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, they know. The ayes have it and we've approved article four as read. Out of the five, shall the town authorize the elimination of the rescue department reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund? All future expenditures paid through rescue operating expenses and contracted services. Is there a motion? So moved or a second? It is moved and seconded that the town authorize the elimination of the rescue department reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund. All future expenditures paid through rescue operating expenses and contracted services. Chair?
Same, same question. I can help explain this, although I don't know if somebody from rescue would rather explain it. Essentially, this is being eliminated due to a lack of capacity on the present rescue squad. We just don't have the personnel anymore to maintain it and therefore, we're going to be shifting all emergency services to the Ennisburg ambulance service, as described elsewhere in the town report.
Any other questions or comments?
There will also be first responder, oh, there still will be first responder services. So, when it can happen, you know, there will be somebody there while you're waiting for the ambulance to arrive, you know, so there's still people certified in town that can help.
Operating.
Right. Thank you, Brett.
Chair?
In light of this item being on the agenda, I do want to take a moment just to thank everybody who has served on the Montgomery Rescue Squad. I think out of, you know, all the departments and I think out of, you know, all the departments in town, fire and rescue are the ones that keep us safe and keep us alive, so I think we owe great debt to them. I'd specifically like to thank and embarrass two people as well. In 2007, Kevin Cheffler and Morgan Daybell took over management of the squad, and they have served for a combined total of forty-two years. Kevin since 1993 and Morgan since 2001. So, could Kevin and Morgan please come up here?
You slip off the back of your...
Really? I can't embarrass them. Well, we have to present to Morgan and Kevin two trunnels. These trunnels were removed and replaced during the restoration of the Hutchins Comfort Bridge in Montgomery Center in 2010. They probably date to about 1883. Trundle is a variation of the word tree nail, which is a wooden peg that swells and wet and is used to fashion timbers, especially in shipbuilding. Square-headed trunnels were used to fashion the timbers that make up trusses, which are the weight-bearing portions of our covered bridges. Towns are made up by many people, with some like this trundle playing a special role in bonding it together and making it a better community, raising the sum of its parts. Kevin and Morgan, even though they're not here, are such people. On behalf of the town, we want to thank you very much for your years of service, serving on and running the Montgomery Ambulance Service. So, clap real loudly.
We have a question from Stan, is why is this money not being put into emergency management so we can pay Ennisburg?
So, the money, the money essentially is being shifted toward that purpose, it's just not going to remain in a dedicated reserve fund. The emergency services are going to be paid through the general fund, as is reflected in the, in the overall budget.
Other, other questions? In the back?
So, Brent...
Please identify yourself.
Oh, Mary Ann. Brent, you mentioned that there'll still be local people who are still certified available in the event of an emergency first on scene. I'm just curious, is that a clarity, is that only if they're available?
No, unavailable.
Inavailable.
Right, yeah.
So, what's up the new estimated timeframe then for the ambulance from Ennisburg to come in the event of an emergency? How does that square with the turnaround of our local...
Depends on your road.
I know. I hear you.
You know, I can't tell you that.
I mean, as someone with a genetic allergies, this terrifies me.
There's, you know, the problem is, is the lack of personnel.
I, I hear you.
You know, you can't, and, and the dedication that you have to do for that position is, is quite demanding. Unfortunately, no one had to work, you know?
Right.
There's no answer to your question. Not this time.
Yeah. And if someone's available locally today, maybe they can speak to it. Are they equipped with breathing tubes that they could be first on a scene?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
The, the first responders that are going to be available, and again, I'm sorry. The first responders that are in town are still the same people that are on the ambulance squad now. It's just a matter of the number of volunteers is diminished to the point that we don't have enough people to cover all these ships. So, we're having to rely on Ennisburg for twenty-four hour coverage. What's going to happen is the volunteers that are in town will still have their radios, they still will have some equipment that they will be able to bring to the scene, oxygen tanks, for example.
Liquidated.
Yeah, yeah. AEDs will be available, and if there is someone on the squad and they are here and they hear the call, they're going to try and be there as fast as they can. But there will be situations, unfortunately, where no one is available because we don't have enough people, and we will have to rely on Ennisburg and their response time, and that's, that's a tough situation for us. I wish we had enough volunteers that we could continue with what we've had for the last twenty years, but as Brent said, it's a tough job, requires an incredible amount of training, it's a tremendous investment for the people to do it, and we respect and appreciate them, but I wish we had more.
I just had, the assets from the rescue department, do we have the ambulance or equipment that we're going to sell, or... Are there assets that are going to, what's happening?
We do have an ambulance. We haven't discussed or figured out what we're going to do with the ambulance yet.
But I'm assuming if those things are sold, they would go toward the general fund?
Yeah, that is, that is the assumption.
Other questions?
I'm Jay, Chris and Holt, and I'm sure you guys, Chris and I, and David, or...
Jay, so hi you.
David, Chris, and I, and Morgan, and Kevin are the people on the squad, and...
And Lynn.
And Lynn, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, we still do need a supply, I don't know how you guys fund it, but you know, there are still, if you're going to be a first responder, you still have to have supplies. And so, I don't know how you're going to divvy that out, or how Kevin is looking at it. I know they're not here to speak to it, they would definitely be able to speak to that better, but like having pagers at work, I mean, ours has to sit on pager because it can't be removed. So, and because we were a night shift, it didn't matter with them. But, I'm just saying is that there are, there are expenses sometimes to being first responder, we don't mind being first responder, you just want to make sure you have your stuff. And I don't know in the future if you're going to provide batteries for your AEDs or update your medications for EpiPens or Epi, you know, they don't have P, no, they do have no. So anyway, I, you know, you, you do probably need to think about that, I just don't know how you guys are going to go funding that, or if you're doing that, it'll be the general fund.
So, right now, we have worked out with Ennisburg, they're gonna, the first responders will work under their umbrella. Ennisburg has volunteered to supply, specifically as we have discussed, such as the, the AEDs and some other supplies going forward after this year, you know, if we see greater budget needs, we can obviously amend the budget going forward as it is. And this is going to be out of line in the, in the budget, it would be line 114.
Any questions or comments? Please identify yourself.
I'm Joe Sherman. I'm commenting on this, it seems to me, given the demographics of our town and our state, that's a, a service that I would reluctantly, as I think a couple people would let you see disappear. I understand the pressures you're under and the lack of having people on board, and my suggestion is that there's some kind of incentives. I know that the kind of training for this work is, is time-consuming and probably even costly, there's some kind of budget item that you have to encourage people to become involved in this kind of personal safety and health situation. Because again, the demographic in this town and the state as a whole, there's going to be more older people, of which I am one of them, who are going to be around. And anyway, I, my, my request is once again, not to let this go immediately without maybe some additional effort, which would be difficult, but it might be well worth it. Thank you.
In the back? Please, please identify yourself.
Brad, I think. There's been some discussion with the rescue squad on perhaps keeping the ambulance so that they can be part of the first response team to go and help people, not necessarily it wouldn't be able to, be able to transport people, but at least some of the equipment that we have to help people on scene until Redford ambulance, or the Ennisburg ambulance is able to get there. So, and I don't think that we can sell it as an ambulance because it's so old, it's not a big moneymaker. Have it go to someone who's going to need it for a short term or something. I think it would be, you know, in the town's interest to keep it as a first response vehicle, have all the equipment on board. Anyway.
I got a request for an amendment from Stan Feldman to amend the article to have the res- the rescue reserve fund remain as is to fund ambulatory services from Ennisburg. Is there a second? To amend the article to have the reserve, to have the rescue reserve fund remain as is to fund ambulatory services from Ennisburg. It's offered as an amendment, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded that we amend the article to, to have the reserve, have the rescue reserve fund remain as is to fund ambulatory services from Ennisburg. Is there discussion?
My second is based on just the comments that we've just heard, the uncertainty, being amused, the ambulance is a feature, it's kind of being on the gear mark, money to decide what we may or may not want to do with rescue, but as Jay pointed out, you know, maintaining first responders' supplies, using the ambulance if we need to, it seems a little premature to just, to mix the whole budget line at this point.
Wendy?
I, I believe this is more about management of the money rather than taking it away. It's still going to be there, it's just, I know in the past, the auditors have suggested that the money be managed through the general fund regardless of the department that it's allocated to.
Jay, Chris and Holt, the ambulance I think cannot be used because it doesn't pass inspection anymore. My understanding was we were getting to a point where the ambulance needed a new one, and we have so few people that were working, you know, the people who can go on calls are so little that it's very hard for us to get out and be committed to have it every six to six o'clock in the morning. So, I'm, I'm pretty trustworthy that we elected these guys to, to make good judgments about where the money goes, and I think Ennisburg, we think, we really support Ennisburg as being their backup because they have paramedic, they have the equipment, they have the training, and we support them. And I think that they've made an agreement with Ennisburg to provide those things, I think they're perfectly happy to have our extra help when we can provide it. And I'm not scared about money not being there if we came back and said, hey, we'd really like that. So...
So, I was just, seconding what Wendy, what Wendy said, this is basically just a budget thing, because we're paying for a service similar to any other services that we might request from outside contractors, those all come through the general budget, whereas a reserve fund would be the town putting money away for specific capital items, such as a new ambulance. So because we're going with an outside service, that's why it reflected as such. As far as the disposition of assets that are part of rescue right now, we can have that conversation and work out the best thing for everyone in the community. And first responders can still ask the select board for supplies regardless of whether or not we have this reserve fund available. The select board would be able to make that decision and allocate those supplies as needed, so there, you know, it's not like we're taking all the money away.
Okay. I can, can I repeat in a second?
How much money is in the reserve line? The full part would be thirty something?
Forty-four thousand nine hundred sixteen, eighteen. Can you find that number on page thirty-three?
On page thirty-three.
Under summary of all reserve balances?
So, at the bottom of page thirty-three, under summary of all reserve balances, rescue, forty-four thousand nine hundred sixteen.
So, quite candidly, if we went forward with this second motion, that fund's going to disappear anyway because it's going to not even cover the cost of one-year service from Ennisburg, so we might as well get rid of it because if not, if we do what's been proposed and allocate the money to Ennisburg, it's going to go away anyway. We've got to pay them anyway, it doesn't matter which account we pay them from.
Proceedurally, thinking of it, it seems as if the amendment would serve the same purpose as voting no on the article.
Yes.
I can, can I re-take?
Let, let us vote on the amendment as an author, we discussed it. Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
I just asked what Stan, what Stan was going to do when he decided to make the amendment.
Liz is actually transcribing his response now, to be read by the moderator.
While we're waiting, any other discussion on the amendment?
Moral of the game, fire and rescue are probably the two most important departments in any town. I think rescue would be the most important, those folks can deliver, they save lives. And I think that we should keep this money intact in the event that it could be resurrected, and I think we should look into having a regular, full-time ambulance service like the Ennisburg or Ennisburg, that money would be well, well spent. I think we could curtail some of the expenses and the goodies that we have in town that are far less important, channel that money into a rescue department, it is just of utmost importance. We're thirty minutes or more at least from an ambulance coming up on some of these fast rebuildings. First responders obviously can help, but that's not getting a person to the hospital. I think we should certainly keep this intact. Thank you.
I do have a response from Stan, which is that this is not a question of trust, and it is more of a question of having money directly applied to the service involved by utilizing the reserve fund and maintaining those funds to be solely applicable to the service of which it has been collected. Charter?
So, I would, I would just repeat that if we do that, what's going to happen is we're going to use the funds in the reserve fund to pay for Ennisburg in the meantime, and essentially draw that fund down to zero. If we want to make an allocation in the future, if we get the capacity to have an ambulance service back in town, I'm all for it, and we can do that, but to keep this money separate and then pull money elsewhere, essentially, we're going to be pulling, pulling money either way. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Jacob?
I think when Morgan and Kevin came to the, to the select board, they was with great reluctance, I wish they were here to speak to this. This is not a surprise, unfortunately, they've been asking for more support for a number of years now, the staffing issue has been on the table for years. So, I think that keeping the money in reserve is not going to resurrect the rescue service, that's not the weak link. We can make whatever monies need to be made available at the town, wherever services we deem fit, but the issue here is not whether or not this reserve fund remains a reserve fund or not, the issue is if we don't have the people to run the service. And so, in terms of what we're voting towards on this amendment, I just want to be very clear about the intention behind that. It is certainly not in the select board, nor within the rest of the department's interests in not having the service available. It's not a financial liability, it's a staffing personnel liability. In my knowledge on the board, we have, we have finance classes and stuff for people, you know, wanting to be on the UMP. We have, you know, tried to help, you know, people along to get into the service.
Will that...
Please identify yourself.
To handle, will funds for like training, new hospital, medical... Excuse me, Angela, will funds for like training, new hospital, medical, senior groups still be available for classes and certifications?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, the funds, we, we certainly have funds we could allocate for that, um, I think the broader question that we need to figure out is can we have the capacity to put a plot back together?
Broad question on the amendment? Um, based upon our discussion, it seems to me that the amendment is equivalent to voting no on the, on the article. However, if we both, if we want to proceed with the vote on the amendment, I'll do that. Um, the amendment, I think it's just getting complicated. Again, I think the amendment is equivalent to voting no on the article. We want to either eliminate the rescue department reserve fund or we want to keep it. Now, is there any objection? No objection having been heard, let's proceed to the main article, which is the town authorized the elimination of the rescue department reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund. Any further discussion? If not, let's proceed to the vote. All those in favor of Article Five, to that the town authorized the elimination of the rescue department reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it, and the town has voted to authorize the elimination of the rescue department reserve fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund. Article Six.
I'll order, this morning Mayor moved to suspend the rules to recognize a visiting guest.
Uh, wait, a visiting guest, who's the guest?
Uh, Paul Costello from the Vermont Council on Rural Development.
Paul Costello from the Vermont Council, I'm with the Council on Rural Development. Is there any objection after Paul Costello addressed the doubt? No objection having been heard. Mr. Costello, you here?
I'll just take a minute to introduce, um, Paul Costello from the Vermont Council on Rural Development. Um, the select board has been working for, you know, here we have, uh, the select board has been working to find a mechanism for our community to have a more effective, community engaged decision-making process. A lot of this is stemming out of the contentious debate and drama that's come out of trying to figure out what to do around our town office needs and what to do with the existing town office building, um, and we, as a board, have been feeling that the, the nature and tenor of the discourse and the ability to move forward making good decisions has not been affected the way we've been going about the process thus far. And so we set about to try to find another mechanism of how to solicit input from the town and empower the town to be able to make the decision, um, independent of formal select board leadership and trying to get a third party group in to help us as a community facilitate the process of figuring out how to develop our infrastructure in a way that we can all feel good about. Um, so we looked at a number of different programs and a number of different organizations, uh, and ultimately, um, found this wonderful opportunity within our state of Vermont Council on Rural Development has a program called the Community Business Program. Um, I won't say anything more to that, uh, I'll let Paul give the information around that, um, but Paul's the executive director of VCRD, um, who, uh, whose group is going to be facilitating our town's process, we're going to be starting this process in June, July, so I'll, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you so much, uh, is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Paul Costello, um, okay. Costello, thank you for having me, it's an honor to be here, um, we love this stuff, we love town meeting, and, uh, the Council on Rural Development is a nonpartisan group, we're charged by the federal farm bill to help coordinate policy in Vermont in service to rural communities. So I have a board that's made up of half the governor's cabinet of a Republican or a Democratic administration, we really don't care. We have the heads of federal agencies in Vermont on our board, we're the only organization that can because we wrote it into the farm bill. We have the heads of each congressional office, then we have the heads of statewide nonprofits like Paul Broome from Preservation Trust and other groups that cover the ground in the state of Vermont in service to community. We also have regional and local, um, leadership and then business leadership on our board to, to be balanced. And we take the charge of helping move policy forward very seriously, but our fundamental interest is in serving rural communities. So we're the most experienced community facilitating group in, in the state of Vermont. We've worked with about sixty towns around Vermont, every place from Troy to Rutland to Bennington, Manchester, um, and in the last couple of years we've been doing a lot of work in the kingdom, we're just finishing a process with Newport, um, and before that we were in Vernon. So we don't look for communities that are in trouble, we look for communities where people, um, want to line up around priorities, they want to set the next agenda for their community and they want to engage everybody in town to do so. So again, we don't come in, in service to any particular agenda, we've been invited by the select board of Montgomery to bring this process here, it's highly competitive, we don't charge the town for the service, but it costs us forty to fifty thousand dollars to do one of these processes. Essentially, we, um, we work to draw the whole community together. We're very old fashioned, we're very old fashioned Vermonters, we believe in patriotism for our place and we believe in the power of democracy. And we don't come in with our own agenda, we don't know what's good for Montgomery, we don't know what's good for Rutland, um, but we believe that people in these communities know a lot better than state and federal officials. We try to help a community line up, you know, everybody knows what Newport's gone through, where they've been beaten up and they're, they're in a tough situation in the wake of the U D five. And that's depressing, discouraging, they had their hopes set high, and in that town, uh, it's, it's a deep struggle, it's a struggle when you get hit hard to stand up, um, and stand up for things in common. And so they've gone through a heck of a process of, of, uh, challenge and recrimination. And in our process, we say, well, you know, it's important to put your cards on the table in terms of the things that worry you, but what are you going to take power over? What are you going to do for the future? How are you going to line up? And so in Newport, they basically have set four major objectives and they've lined up a hundred people who are joining task forces to drive those objectives forward. And in essence, we bring a team of people with us so that in, in Newport, over the course of months, we had forty executive level state and federal officials with us, including major funders, people with technical resources and support, philanthropists, federal agencies and so forth. And what we've, what we try to do is help a town become a collective spirit point of activity towards the good, towards whatever that community addresses, and then we try to line up resources to help the town move forward. So we'll be starting in July to August in, in Montgomery, um, based on our invitation from the select board. Uh, we really care about small towns, um, you know, we work with places like Rutland where we have four hundred and fifty people attending meetings, but we care just as much about Crasberry where they're now building a new daycare center, they've built a partnership between the outdoor center, the school and the college to make the whole community a laboratory for adult education and, and stimulating activities for young people, um, and they're doing bike pathways, trails and so forth to connect to that whole part of the, the any day economy for the future. Um, the process works where we start contacting people in town, we start with select board, we think about the school, we think about business leaders, and we begin to build a steering committee over a couple of months so that we're representing the full demographic of the community, from, from lower income people to people who are doing very well, from woodworkers and farmers to artists and business leaders and bankers. And we deliberately try to bring people together in the steering committee to be a cross-section of the community, not that anyone's in or anybody's out, but like, to try and get the big picture of the community from us, us, our core group of people. And that group defines what are the issues that we start with in terms of talking about the future of a place like Montgomery. And we don't know what those issues are going to be today, but they may be agriculture, they may be the future of economic development and business incubation in town, they may be connecting better to JP, you know, I don't know. We, we then go out and we say, who's the top person in Vermont with expertise, with technical assistance or with money? They ought to be listening as Montgomery sets its vision and its goals and directions around this particular topic. Um, we, we hold public forums and we, we'll host and bring together at least as many people as, as here today to participate in setting this direction. We gather notes from these sessions, we cluster analyze those notes and we come back and we run a town meeting that's essentially a meeting where ideas go up on the wall, we go from what the challenges are to what's within our power of action, what are we going to do to drive our community forward in the future? And people vote for the ones that they want to stand for and line up, not voting for Montpelier or Washington DC to solve, but the things that you're going to drive forward yourself. And then we again bring a team of people back to the community to say, what are your action steps, what are the step-by-step process to move these things forward, what other towns have been successful in doing this, and then how can we help you with resources, either technical or financial, to move these kinds of projects forward? So we don't know where this goes, um, we, we love our work, it's very patriotic for Vermont and we, we love small towns and every time we come to, we find it fascinating because no two are alike. Um, we're very honored to do this work and we deeply appreciate your interest and attention. I don't know if anyone has questions, we should take them, so I'll follow the vote.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Costello? Diana?
I would just note that, um, VCRD did bring some sample road tours down to the town office, um, during one of their, one of their visits with the select board and those are available for review, specifically the one that I found most interesting, Cambridge, I'm not sure how many of you are able to venture through there, but they does some great things as well. So anybody who's interested in those documents, you're welcome to come back and take a look.
I've left a two-sided sheet back here that describes the process of running.
That sheet's also on page seventy-nine of the town report.
In the town report, page seventy-nine.
We're, once we, once we've come, we've been accepted by the, the select board or invited by the select board and we've chosen to, to come to that town, um, takes a couple of months to get organized, we build a steering committee meeting for the first month, we have what we call a community visit day, which is just a big wide open, um, day to put ideas on the table, we have a town meeting day, which is a day to judge those ideas, champion what's most important and decide which ones you're going to drive forward. And then we have a resource day where we help people build, um, action plans and connect the resources, and then we follow up. So the whole process, um, in its core is about five months, but we're with that community and behind that community and rallying resources to that community potentially for years. The big thing that we say everywhere we go, you know, we've done this in Johnson where they leveraged twelve million dollars for downtown redevelopment, they, they replaced the bridges, they have the secretary of transportation watching the bridges collapsing into the river all day, um, and, and the bridges in, in town, that's in the middle of the priority list in the agency of transportation to the top, and we brought the congressional offices, we always bring all three congressional offices, and they look what they could do to support the streetscape and some of these things. But, but we're, it's not all about money, it's really about local leadership. In some towns like, like Hopeley, they have their high school on one end of the main street and they have the college on the other end, Fremont College, and, and there's young people hanging around in the middle of town that didn't have positive things to do and were a lot of trouble. Um, and they decided as a community they were going to become a laboratory for youth activities, and they lined up and they didn't build a budget, they just put energy together and they started producing events. And, and the whole town was looking for that, was just there was some for everybody in grateful activity. So we don't know where it goes, it's about five to six months, um, it's fairly intense, uh, but it's also a huge celebration for the community, it's like a, a big conference, um, each, at each session about what's good and where you can go and what's within your power and then actually, you know, get into action.
Um, I'm a little confused, are we already chosen for your program or is there still a competitive process going on?
No, you, you've got a letter from the select board a while back, and we came up and met with the select board and some members of the public, um, and we were very interested in Montgomery and we've selected Montgomery for this year, and we're going to Wallenford right now, and when they send us to Wallenford, we're going to ship right back up here. So we're, we're very eager to, to.
We have, we have been selected, uh, it was, uh, it was a very competitive process and, um, I, I'm very, we're very appreciative that you guys put us in line for this because I know, you know, you've done a lot of work here in the northern parts of state and I know there was some interest in trying to spread it around more, and to the fact that you saw something good in Montgomery, you thought there was an opportunity that we're very appreciative of.
Thank you. Other questions, Mr. Costello?
A reminder, I don't know if it was clear, but, uh, this is coming at no cost to the town, and I've heard a couple of people ask over the last, you know, as they've been hearing about this, um, the only costs that come from the town, please correct me if I'm getting this wrong, we need to host a dinner for the community to launch the process, we've already had some, um, uh, pledged donations of protein and various other foodstuffs, um, and, and the town needs their line of mailing, and the intention there to really be able to reach absolutely everybody. Just on a very personal note, I was really, um, uh, inspired by, um, uh, this program's commitment and that was one of the criteria for me in trying to find a good program for this town is how to get people into the room that are otherwise never going to show up at a town meeting, they're never going to go to a select board meeting, they're never going to come to a public, you know, warned informational meeting about a thing, that's just not how they're going to engage in the town. And so part of the intention here is to engage folks that otherwise our current systems of engagement aren't working. And so part of that is our investment in this dinner, investment in the mailing, and then of course VCRD is me putting in many, 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 many hours and beating the pushes and trying to get everybody to the table, and again, that's, that's not at a cost to the town, but I guess my personal ask, and I'm going to speak on the head of the select board, our ask of the community is to try to get as many of your friends and neighbors and people involved as possible. The entire success of this relies upon our willingness and ability to show up. And so, you know, the select board brought this to the town, because my impression was that there was a dissatisfaction, uh, decisions were being presented and made in the town. And so now we're asking the community, do all of us come and show up for this process and help take ownership over this process? That's my personal ask, my ask, some on behalf of the select board, to assuage any concerns or fears around the cost burden on the town for this, that should not be a concern.
Other questions?
Yeah, it's very interesting, it seems to me that we're talking about not only a top-down thing, but also a crisis in public service. But we're getting enough people, there are twenty-two people here at this meeting, but generally I've been on a number of committees, I see a lot of people here on the, have put in a lot of public service, but we need new blood, we need younger people, we need people who are new to town, who don't have a history of public service, they have to be educated, they have to be persuaded. I'm really suspect of mailings, I don't even know how many of them end up in people's hands. I think what Jacob's talking about, in theory, is a great idea, I think we need some fresh ways to get people on a public service. If I knew what they were, I'd tell you, but I think, I hope that's what you're working on as well, not just having people coming here who are going to tell us what to do or how to do it, but we need ground up, we need people here to grow into appreciating public service, being willing to volunteer and pass it on to other people, that's what democracy is, and we need a lot of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that and, and I agree with you. Um, we actually don't have a top-down program because we don't know what's good for Montgomery, we also don't know what direction you set. Uh, a lot of communities choose to do this and, and a lot of border communities have, have come to us because they want to bring in a new generation of leadership. Um, we hold these sessions, the select board invites the process, but after that, everybody in the community is equal in the process, everyone puts their cards on the table, everyone lines up and says what they stand for. In the end, the community chooses the projects that they want to try to move forward and leadership emerges, uh, from the people who sign up to move those forward. So we see in Rutland, for example, two hundred new volunteers signing up and a new generation of people who, um, this was probably ten years ago, have swept through that, that city to renew it. Um, we don't have a design for what that looks like and every town is different, um, but everyone will be invited. We also are really, really diligent, this is, we've been doing this for twenty years and we don't just send a letter, we get, we use every possible point of public media, from the schools to every club in town, to every website, to every listserv, to front court forum, to whatever means are within that community and we, we are very, very systematic about the public invitation process, including phone calls to neighbors, um, because the, it's the personal touch that works the best. Uh, so we, we, we appreciate, um, how So we appreciate how important that is and we're very, very diligent about it. But I probably take it up in my time and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all and look forward to the process of the company.
Article six. Shall the town authorize the elimination of the Hectorville Bridge Reserve Fund and reprogram the balance? All future expenditures paid through the general fund. Your motion? Moved and seconded. This is our second. Moved and seconded that the town authorize the elimination of the Hectorville Bridge Reserve Fund and reprogram the balance, with all future expenditures paid through the general fund. Any discussion? Merle?
We suddenly appointed a committee probably two years ago for the resurrection of the bridge. The committee did a lot of work over those two years, Darren, Jacob, Sheldon here and Melissa here and others were on that committee. And it boiled down finally to resurrecting the bridge at the rec center, locally, with local talent and everything and so forth. But what happened, we were unable to raise funds. Before we vote on this, I for one would like to see this committee resurrected. At the beginning, there was a lot of enthusiasm to save this bridge, but over the years with the jobs that the committee members had, finally just wore thin and had to dissolve the committee. So I think I would ask if there were four or five volunteers that were dedicated to serve on the committee and to complete the job of resurrecting that bridge, if they would volunteer today, right now, before we vote on this article. If we could do that, then we could keep those funds that we have and continue and hopefully put that bridge in the rec center where we had Hopeley, where the kids are. I don't know if Darren, Joe, David would like to talk about it or not, but if there's any volunteers who wish to raise their hand right now, I know I would continue myself. We would particularly need somebody with computer expertise and hopefully somebody that has some expertise in raising funds. I wanted to ask that gentleman to pay help with the raising funds for local projects. I hope he's left to know where us are. I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Mary, do you have a comment?
I'm just wondering if there was a mistake in leaving out reprogram, reprogram the balance and the general fund from the other side. So just end with reprogram the balance. So all the words to the general fund. An error.
Add the words to the general fund after balance? Yeah.
Is that an amendment or is that just a clarification or does something need to be affirmed in any way?
I'd like to amend it. That's why I wanted to.
Do we add the words to the general fund following the word balance?
Reprogram the balance and add to the general fund?
Correct.
So basically just add a minor amendment, just clears up some of the language. Is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded that we amend the article to read, "The town authorized the elimination of the Hectorville Bridge Reserve Fund and reprogram the balance and add to the general fund." Is that correct?
To the general fund.
Reprogram the balance?
To the general fund.
And we've reprogrammed the balance to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? If not, we can proceed, if there's objection, we can proceed to vote on the amendment, to amend the article to read, "The town authorized the elimination of the Hectorville Bridge Reserve Fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund." All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it, we've amended the article six, which now reads, "The town authorized the elimination of the Hectorville Bridge Reserve Fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund." Discussion on the article as amended? Anyone? Merle?
I don't know, would you ask for a line of yours for a minute?
We, I'm not in the middle of a vote, no. I can do, I do, after we vote, we can do this. I mean, you went on with that, we can't, I can't amend it to ask for volunteers. Any further discussion?
Just one thing to respond to your question around VCRD. If the town chooses in our community-based process that this is a priority and we really want to see this bridge resurrected and revitalized, if we haven't disposed of it between now and July, and that's still, the physical pieces are still there for us to work with, then absolutely, that this may well be, that vehicle may be another vehicle through which this process can continue. And that would be, again, for the town to decide through that process.
Is there any plan to dispose of it in the near future? So it's just still hanging out in San Antonio?
Still running.
They last for one more time, I believe. I'd like the volunteer, but I'd hate your plan for the rec center. There's already three covered bridges.
There's just one comment on the bridge, on the planning commission, several of us here, we're, we're working on the planning commission about having some hiking trails around town. And if we can't salvage the bridge, we're hoping maybe to use components of it for small bridges and river crossings and stuff that are used on the trail. So we keep some sense of the spirit and some of the, some of the pieces together. So at least salvage something. So at least that's where we are now, we're talking about that for planning commission and trying to get other groups involved as well. That's that moro. Thank you.
Other questions or comments or debate? And if not, we can proceed with the vote.
Do we have to pay storage rent?
The question is, do we have to pay storage rent?
Yes. We are supposed to be charged $375 per year storage fee. San Antonio wanted to submit a bill to be paid in 2017. I don't know that they would submit a double bill in 2018. I haven't had any indication of that.
Other questions or comments? If not, let's proceed to the vote. On Article six, as amended, that the town authorized the elimination of the Hectorville Bridge Reserve Fund and reprogram the balance to the general fund. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it and we voted Article six as amended. Okay, anyone who is interested in the fund, not in the fund, but in the Hectorville Bridge, please kind of, you know, consult with Merle and maybe, you know, we can get some local, a little more local activity going to help us, you know, take care of this bridge. Article seven, shall the town vote the following sum of money to defray the expenses in the ensuing year for Article seven A, the fire department? There's not an action, there's a motion. If I, I need a number.
Two, thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-four thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town spends $34,000 for the fire department. Any discussion? Questions, comments, amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. No objection, no objection having been heard. Article seven, that the town spends $34,000 for the fire department. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it and we voted to the following sum of $34,000 for the fire department. Article seven B, the rescue department?
Any motion to zero?
Zero, zero for the rescue department? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions, debate, amendments? Mary?
Shouldn't we just pass it over?
Ideally, it's.
So it's going to be yes or no on whether or not we can zero?
It doesn't make any difference. Let's just go through it and vote. All those in favor of not spending any money on the rescue department, please say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it and the rescue department has been defunded for this year. Article seven C, the machinery replacement fund? Motion?
Thirty-two thousand.
There's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we spent $32,000 for machinery replacement fund. Discussion? Asuka?
I'd just like to hear from Mike Smaller about why we're replacing all this equipment and, you know, the machinery replacement, road budget, the time to bring it up, another 22 grand up, another pummeling truck.
I just want to quickly, just this specific increase of 22,000, the budget committee offered, the select board accepted and agreed, the 22,000 is actually added here as the down payment for replacement on the pumper truck for the fire department. So just to be clear, this increase is not related to roads.
Other discussion on machinery replacement? If not, no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. And the motion is, the article is to allocate $32,000 for the machinery replacement fund. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it and we voted $32,000 for the machinery replacement fund. Article seven D, infrastructure replacement fund? Your motion?
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, there's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we spent $52,700 on the infrastructure replacement fund. There's discussion? Questions? Debate? Amendments? Brett?
Why the difference from last year?
So this one, it's a little complicated. One main difference is that we, thank you Brett. One big difference is that we don't have the town's portion of the Route 58 paving project included for this year. What is included for this year in the allocation is money is for the Brady Road repairs that are needed. There's also money in here for the town's share of a new, additional class three paving grant, our portion of which is going to be for 50,000.
Other questions, comments? Amendments? If not, there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. Article seven D, that we spent $52,700 on our infrastructure replacement fund. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it and we voted the sum of $52,700 for the infrastructure replacement fund. Article seven C, sorry, seven E, the library operating expenses and payroll. There's a motion?
Make motion.
$19,032, there's a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded that we spent $19,032 for our library operating expenses and payroll. Any discussion? Comments? Questions? Amendments? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. That the town spent $19,032 for the library operating expenses and payroll. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it and we voted to spend $19,032 for the library operating expenses and payroll. Article seven F, building capital improvement and maintenance. Is there a motion?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, there's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town spent $50,000 for building capital improvement and maintenance. Any discussion? Questions? Comments or amendments? If not.
Paul Michael, should we have a little rundown of what's going to be done?
So the two items that are driving this increase here, one is that the board has been discussing for a while the need to look at getting additional generators or generator for use in town, considering looking up at the public service building, given the operations that go on there. There was a period this past year where we had prolonged outage in town, so that affected services. So that's one item there. The other item is there's some money earmarked here towards looking at a potential retrofit of the PSP building to meet the needs of a town clerk's office. Over the past year, there's been discussion around that, there's no formal movement or motion towards it, but given that we have, we can get this process getting underway, the board felt we should put some money away towards looking at that, should that be something that comes out of this process and we have some resources on hand to move forward with it.
Other comments? Questions?
Peter Martin, have you done anything to fix the other building, the mold problem? Is that done?
The short answer there is no, that is not done.
Is there going to be a time when you're going to fix it?
Yes.
I mean, how many years down the road?
We, we don't know at this point. There's, I mean, that's been a big point of discussion on the board over the past three years and there's a number of moving parts going into that decision. It's certainly on our high priority list, but there's some other decisions that have to get made before we can go in there and do that work.
Any other comments? If not, there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote.
Well, I will add, just in case it wasn't clear of the work that was done, the roof on that building was replaced to mitigate some of the water damage that was going on.
How long are you going to let it sit there? I don't think that, I don't know. Let it sit there and if there is a mold problem, before you fix it? I mean, I've been coming here, I know, and I've stayed in this town for the last three years and I've been in this town since 1958. And it just sits there. I hear grumblings that the post office wants to rest. I hear grumblings that the post office would like to take over the whole thing.
So at this point, the post office has not responded in the affirmative that they do. It's been, the discussion has been initiated by the board on multiple occasions. The post office so far has told us their happiest plan is where they are and don't see a problem. I wish they would take over the whole building.
Well, I mean, if you, if you go with that roof and the post office decides to pack up and move because of the mold problem, I don't think anybody in this building is going to be happy. If there's a mold problem as bad as I hear it is, it should be addressed and stressed now.
I, I agree.
Well then, why aren't you going somewhere?
That also, that issue was also raised with the post office and their response was that there is not a problem in the building.
There's not a problem in this building, then why do you need to care about the hardware?
Deanna?
I wouldn't say that we've done nothing. We've made the postal service aware that there is a mold problem in the building. We've provided them with both of the air quality samples that we received from WorkSafe. We have also provided two air filtration systems and an ozone generator to help mitigate the health problems that may end up happening for the postal workers. They have come in independently and not seen any sign of mold in the area that the postal network uses. That does not mean it's not there. We've provided it, they are choosing to ignore it.
The other thing that makes forward action complicated is it's not a simple matter of just mold remediation. There is a wide scale of interventions that could happen to the existing building, but that also triggers a larger question around the intended use of that building. So we'd be looking at incredibly large expenditure to revitalize and maintain that as a serviceable building. There's also an option to take that building down, which is another potential path forward. None, we do not yet have enough clarity as to whether or not this is what to do with this building and how much is worthy of investment. Personally, I'm hoping that part of what emerges from our community visits program is we have a clear mandate from the town about how to move forward with town infrastructure. This is intimately involved with a very multifaceted and complicated and contentious debate around how we're servicing town infrastructure at large. And so to be investing tens if not hundreds of thousands of dollars of reconditioning funds into that existing building without a larger plan and a better context and a greater understanding and clear mandate from the town as to how the town would like to proceed with infrastructure, doesn't feel appropriate yet. Which is not to say that we've done nothing or that we're ignoring it or don't care. I've gone through that building twice now to take a look at the extent of the damage and get some sort of a sense of really what are we in for.
This is far from a clear and simple problem to deal with and it's not just that building in isolation, it's that building in context of how we're using the infrastructure, the PSB, how many different buildings the town chooses to hold. One of the big pieces of feedback that I heard from the town during the debates was that we have lots of different buildings in various states of quality and repair and we need to look at this as a multi-building infrastructure issue in general. And so making a high investment decision around this specific building without that larger context is exactly what I heard the town say they don't feel comfortable doing. And so part of my interest in trying to solicit a community visits project to come up here is so that we can, as a town, make a clear path forward as to how we want to handle town infrastructure in general. And I see this as one of, if not the highest priority to figure out is what to do with this building. This is absolutely a high priority, but I wish you could say it was a simpler or less costly thing to wrangle and look at it just in isolation of mold in that building, but it's a lot more complicated the more we look at it.
Other comments? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. Article 7F, to spend the sum of fifty thousand dollars for building capital improvement and maintenance, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted fifty thousand dollars for building capital improvement and maintenance. Article 7G, the recreation department. Motion please?
Motion for twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand? There a second? Your point of order?
Christine Suarez, noticing that it went down two thousand dollars, I remember last year...
It's not on the floor yet. I thought you had a point of order. Moved and seconded that we allocate twenty thousand dollars to the recreation department. Who made the initial motion? Go ahead.
So it's increased by two thousand dollars, I remember last year that Amen, who I know was here, but anyone at rec department can say anything, that we had, I think it was three thousand dollars?
I think it was two.
It was two, that we had increased in order to help Amen get the summer sessions program started. So I'm wondering why...
Would you, would you, would you like to make an amendment?
I would.
Dan, please.
Did anybody ask, first anyone want to address it? Marsha?
When we met through our budget, we felt that we could, we looked at what we made, what we got in for sponsors last year, and we felt strongly that we would be able to get the eight thousand dollars we need to run summer sessions without the extra two thousand.
Other questions or comments on the recreation department? Anywhere? Moved and seconded that we spent twenty thousand dollars. If there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. Moved and seconded that we spent twenty thousand dollars on the recreation department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted to spend twenty thousand dollars for the rec department. Article 7H, a reappraisal fund. Is there a motion?
Motion for eight thousand.
Eight thousand, there a second? Moved and seconded that we spend eight thousand dollars for our reappraisal fund. Any discussion? Questions? Comments? Debate? Amendments? If not, and if there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. The motion, the article is that we spend eight thousand dollars for the reappraisal fund, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted eight thousand dollars for the reappraisal fund. Article 7I, the conservation commission. Your motion?
Motion for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Seven fifty, there a second? Moved and seconded that the town spent seven hundred and fifty dollars for the conservation commission. Any comments? Questions? Amendments? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. The motion is that we spend seven hundred and fifty dollars for the conservation commission. All those in favor say aye. Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted seven fifty for the conservation commission. Article 7J, emergency management. Your motion? Twelve hundred, there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we spend twelve hundred dollars for emergency management. Any discussion? Questions? Amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. If there's no objection. No objection having been heard. The article is to spend twelve hundred dollars on emergency management, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted twelve hundred dollars for emergency management. Seven K, restoration of records. Motion?
Motion for four thousand.
Four thousand dollars, there a second? Moved and seconded that we spend four thousand dollars on restoration and of records. Any discussion? Barry?
I have a question. I believe a dollar of the recording fee, no question.
I believe it was back in two thousand and eight, the state actually increased the recording fees from seven dollars to ten dollars, providing language in that statute that allows towns to vote, actually the select board, to invest up to three dollars per page into the restoration records fund. At this point, you would see in our restorations or reserve funds that we have over twenty thousand dollars in this account. I have just had to restore a map book and a volume that was falling apart and I would not allow researchers to touch supervised because it was in such disrepair. That came to the, to about eight thousand dollars, just for those two items. This four thousand dollars here represents the annual maintenance cost for our digitization of record system that we have just implemented as of last month. So going forward, every new document that comes in will be scanned via, housed in three separate office locations. And we will eventually be providing an online index so that folks can at least start researching outside of the office. That's all this four thousand dollars covers. There's still plenty of stuff that needs to be done in the vault, but this was where we wanted to start in.
Will we be starting to digitize on the back or at some point?
That is our intent. So we're working right now just to get January first occurrence digitized. And then once we are up to date, we will be moving backwards in, into the previous volumes. We were able to migrate our index that we've been using in our other land records software in two thousand and three to current. So at this point, that process will be much less extensive in that we just need to scan those documents and attach them to the current index. Once we get back prior to two thousand and three, the work will be more extensive.
Other comments? Anywhere? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. The motion is that the town spent four thousand dollars for restoration of records. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted four thousand dollars for the restoration of records. Article 7L, needs pass the vote. Move to pass over, there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we pass over this article, any discussion? Well, there's two different passovers. Well, one is, actually, one is that this starts before debate, with the basis, the objection, the consideration, we require the two thirds. The second is, the second is not, we don't even need a, the second is not debatable, got amended, requires a two thirds vote. All those in favor of passing over? Article 7L, do you say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no. We can see that our two thirds special and we voted to pass over article 7L. Article 8, so the town vote the following sums of money for the town officers as requested. Article 8A, the town clerk, your motion?
Aye, eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the town pay its town clerk eighteen thousand dollars. Any discussion? Debate? Amendments? Merle?
What else of recording fees and license and so forth, what the, what are the tolls of the town clerk, whatever it shakes?
Yeah, so that, that was changed back in nineteen ninety-eight. The clerk does not receive any percentage of fees or taxes.
Other questions? Matt?
This is no, that's a eight point three percent increase and sheet rise in the last two years has been my two point one percent.
That is correct, but this increase, and if you look backwards over the past five or six years, this increase reflects a longer term slow increase the board has tried to make to bring the salary for the town clerk and treasurer to something commensurate position. For a long time, there were no increases. I mean, if you just wanted to pay with space to the CPI, if you used the old formula that you referenced and take it to the CPI coming up to now, you had a salary of forty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Combined, I'm sorry. So, well, I agree that taken on just a year to year increase, it does represent a significant increase as well above CPI, but taken on the whole over the last decade, it is not actually that sort of an increase.
Other questions?
I just want to make a point, a few minutes ago, we were just talking about digitizing the records, and that's going to take a lot of time. You're going backwards to, what, eighteen hundred? I mean, that's a lot of work. You're looking at a small increase, and I don't know if your hour's going to be increasing or not, you know? It continues. On top of all your other duties, now you're going to have to start going backwards.
Other comments? Anywhere? If there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. The motion is to spend eighteen thousand dollars for the town clerk, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we voted to spend eighteen thousand dollars for the town clerk. Article 8B, the town treasurer. Motion?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen? Moved and seconded that we pay our town treasurer sixteen thousand dollars. Any discussion? Comments? Anywhere? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to the vote. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of paying the town treasurer eight, sorry, sixteen thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it, we voted sixteen thousand dollars for the town treasurer. 8C, each select board member. Motion? One thousand dollars, there a second? Moved and seconded that we pay each select board member one thousand dollars plus our thanks. Any discussion? Barry?
We've been paying a thousand dollars in thanks for a number of years, so I would suggest that thanks, it's not the money, but thanks be adjusted for inflation.
I would just like to note, in some research that I was doing over the past week, I came across the fact that the last raise of the select board happened in nineteen eighty-five. It went from seven hundred and fifty dollars to about ten. So in some research that I've done in the past week, I've found that the last time the select board had an increase in their stipend was in nineteen eighty-five, when we had a three-member board, and that rate increased from seven hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand dollars. In the past ten years that have been coming to town meeting, it has been offered a few times to increase that amount, say fifteen hundred. I think there was an amendment once offered for twelve hundred. And each year, the select board has graciously declined that increase. But in perspective, since nineteen eighty-five, we have been paying our selectmen a thousand dollars, which for some equates to probably a negative three cents per hour. So all thanks in caps is fabulous, but I certainly wouldn't be opposed to amendment from the board. I don't feel like I'm in the position to offer that. And that would probably decline.
Any discussion? Questions? Comments? Amendments? Anywhere? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed with the vote. No objection having been heard. The article on the floor is to pay each select board member one thousand dollars and thanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and we voted one thousand dollars for each select board member. Article 8D, the listers. Their motion? Pay the listers, their motion? As written there, there a second?
Okay.
Moved and seconded that we pay our listers first year members fifteen dollars an hour and second year members and, I presume, and on. Eighteen dollars an hour. We may just want a little amendment to clarify this language. Any discussion?
Said that we, second year and...
Beyond and on?
Greater? Further? Let's say grammatically correct. Beyond, second year beyond. And beyond. Second year and beyond.
Second year and beyond. The story, the amendment has been offered to offer the language to first year members fifteen dollars an hour, second year members eighteen dollars, second year members and beyond eighteen dollars an hour. Is there a second? Moved and seconded that we amend the article to add the word and beyond after second year members. Any discussion? Comments? If not, without objection, we can proceed to vote on the amendment. No objection having been heard, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the article to add the words and beyond after second year members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it, we've amended the article to now read that we pay our listers first year members fifteen dollars an hour, second year members and beyond eighteen dollars an hour. Any discussion on the motion as amended? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed with the vote. No objection having been heard. The article on the floor is that we pay our listers, our first year members fifteen dollars an hour, second year members and beyond eighteen dollars an hour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we have adopted 8D and amended. Article 8E, Board of Civil Authority. Your motion? Want to pay our Board of Civil Authority, is there a motion somewhere?
Make a motion to pay Vermont minimum wage.
Vermont minimum wage, there a second?
Okay.
Moved and seconded that we pay our Board of Civil Authority the Vermont minimum wage. Any discussion? What, point of information, what is the Vermont minimum wage?
Ten dollars.
Ten fifty?
I believe.
Any discussion? Comments? Amendments?
I would just add that the Board of Civil Authority has not actually put in time sheets for any of their hours offered to preside over elections, any hearings to grievance of property value. So generally, this line item is not used. And I think that just goes to speak again to our justices of the peace in this select board, that they're donating even more of their time than is worth like within their thousand dollar stipend.
Barry?
I move to amend to Vermont minimum wage and our thanks.
Moving in our thanks to Vermont minimum wage. Is there a second? Moved and seconded we add our thanks to Vermont minimum wage. Any discussion? If there's no objection, we proceed to vote on the amendment to add the word and our thanks. No objection having been heard, all those in favor of adding the words and our thanks to Vermont minimum wage, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say no. The ayes have it and we've amended the article to read that we will pay our Board of Civil Authority the Vermont minimum wage and our thanks. Any discussion on the motion as amended? If not, we can proceed to the vote if there's no objection. No objection having been heard. The motion is that we pay the Board of Civil Authority... The motion is that we pay the Board of Civil Authority the Vermont minimum wage and our thanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we've adopted Article 8E as amended. Article 8F, Board of Abatement, is there a motion? Board of Abatement, is there a motion?
Motion for Vermont minimum wage.
Vermont minimum wage, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we pay the Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage. Any discussion? Barry?
Do they also ordinarily decline payment?
Yes.
Question is, do they also ordinarily use their face?
Yes, they do.
I hope to amend to add...
If the amendment has been offered to add the words "and our thanks" and the Vermont minimum wage, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded we add the word "and our thanks" to the Vermont minimum wage. Is any discussion on the amendment? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to vote on the amendment. No objection having been heard. The one on the floor is to amend Article 8F to add the words "and our thanks" and the Vermont minimum wage. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we've added the words "and our thanks" to Vermont minimum wage. The article on the floor at this point is to pay our Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage and our thanks. Any discussion? If not, we can proceed to the vote. On Article 8F, to pay the Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage and our thanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we have voted to pay our Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage and our thanks. Article 8G, all duly elected or appointed town officers, the IRS allowance or mileage for travel as part of official duties and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly-appointed board. Is there a motion?
I'm ready.
As written, is there a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded that we pay all duly elected or appointed town officers the IRS allowance or mileage for travel as part of official duties and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly-appointed board. Any discussion? Or questions? Point of information, what is the IRS allowance?
$54.5.
$54.50? Any questions or amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote if there is no objection. No objection having been heard. The motion on the floor is that the town shall pay all duly elected or appointed town officers the IRS allowance or mileage for travel as part of official duties and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly-appointed board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we've approved Article 8G as read. Article 9. For the town of Montgomery appropriate the following sums of money as requested by the specified agencies. Article 9A, Age Well, formerly Champlain Valley Agency on Aging, is there a motion?
Move to suspend the rules of both Article 9 in entirety and...
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules and consider all of Article 9 as one article, as one vote.
As read.
Those who accept the rules set and require, no debate, no amendment. All those in favor of suspending the rules to consider Article 9 in its entirety, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we voted to consider all of Article 9 as one. We will still require individual motions on these numbers, which I believe we shouldn't...
No.
No, that would not be reasonable.
Request, okay, okay, so just to accept a request of mine. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed my spot. So basically, Article 9 shall read, the town of Montgomery appropriate the following sums of money as requested by the specified agency, 9A, Age Well, formerly Champlain Valley Agency on Aging, $2,000. B, Franklin Home Health, $2,522. C, Franklin County Industrial Development, $500. D, Azes Nats Association, $1,000. E, the Sisway River Basin Association, $500. Green Upday Vermont, $100. Green Mountain Transit, $568. And Montgomery Town Association, $1,000. Any discussion?
I would just ask that the Montgomery Town Association, actually, correctly should be listed as Montgomery Center for the Arts. The two boards are synonymous in running that, the Montgomery Center for the Arts to the district here, and we're trying to move forward this year and merge them just as Montgomery Center for the Arts.
Are you offering amendments?
Yes.
And what is the amendment?
That instead of Montgomery Town Association, it creates Montgomery Center for the Arts.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move that we change the name from Montgomery Town Association to the Montgomery Center for the Arts. Any discussion on the amendment? If not, if there's no objection, we can proceed to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending Article 9H to read the Montgomery Center for the Arts instead of Montgomery Town Association, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we've amended 9H to read the MCA as opposed to the NTA, Montgomery Center for the Arts instead of Montgomery Town Association. Other?
Loretta, how you got her? And obviously, she's very willing to be honest. As a member of the board of Montgomery County Home Health, I want to thank my town residents for supporting the home health and the recovery. I'm always glad it's not very important. And just to let you know that 29 Montgomery residents received 220 visits last year, and we covered $532,322 in unearned care in the county, which is why we so much appreciate the support we have.
I have a question about Green Mountain Transit, what they do for us. In their couple letter for request of money, they said they sent a hand report. Tell us that if there's no, if it's included. For $568, I know it's penis, but what do they do for Montgomery?
My understanding is that is to help to pray the cost of the ride-share program. We don't have a transit van that comes into Montgomery, but we do have town residents and people from outside of the town that come and provide personal transportation to appointments for those who cannot provide that thing themselves.
Thank you.
Others? Any questions, comments? If not, we can proceed with the vote if there's no objection. If there is no objection, Article 9, the town appropriate the following sums of money as requested by the specified agency, Age Well, formerly Champlain Valley Agency on Aging, $2,000. Franklin County Home Health, $2,522. Franklin County Industrial Development, $500. Azes Nats Association, $1,000. The Sisway River Basin Association, $500. Green Upday Vermont, $100. Green Mountain Transit, $568. And the Montgomery Center for the Arts, $1,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we voted Article 9 as amended.
I did a point to our page, our page 61, this letter from Green Mountain Transit that explains what they do.
Okay. Article 10, so the town go to appropriate $458,758 for contention select board. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that the town appropriate $458,758 for contention select board. Is there any discussion?
Does that need to be adjusted for any of the corrections that were made?
Any other questions or comments? Debate, amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. If there's no objection, no objection having been heard. Article 10, that the town appropriate $458,758 for contention select board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The ayes have it, and we voted to appropriate $458,758 for contention select board. Article 11, so the town recommend the select board adopt the vacant and dangerous building ordinance as proposed appearing elsewhere in this report. Is there a motion? The move, is there a second?
Second.
The move and seconded that the town recommend the select board adopt the vacant and dangerous building ordinance as proposed, which appears elsewhere in this report.
I want to take a second and just kind of outline where this came from and the purpose of putting it on the warning this year. We had several residents of the town came to us concerned about a lot of bank-owned buildings in the center of human village that were not being kept up, that not being taken care of, that they were, in some cases, were dangerous and falling down. And so, they asked the select board to look into what other towns across Vermont are doing. And so, we looked at vacant building ordinances in other towns. I think some of the ones we looked at were Derby Line and Plainfield and Ludlow and a few other towns. And we sort of took some of the best of what each of them had done and cobbled together what we thought would be a very good vacant building ordinance. It's a challenge because we certainly want to respect the rights of private property owners. We don't want to, you know, when you infringe on those rights, you have to do it for a very good reason. And it's been a balancing act for us, trying to figure out a way that we can encourage these banks and these absentee landlords that are just letting these buildings fall down in our community and damaging all of our property values and causing our taxes to fall because the list value isn't going up. But at the same time, we're sure that, you know, we do the right thing. So it's been a balancing act. We had a public hearing about this a couple months ago. We got some great feedback on it. We changed a lot of things in the ordinance. We deleted a lot of things that the public thought was a little too ham-fisted or whatever. And so, the purpose in putting it on the warning today was simply to get feedback, to get a chance for everybody to say, you know, we really want this, or we really don't want this, or we would like it except there's this one thing we feel it should not have, or maybe it's not strong enough. But that's really the purpose today, is we're looking for some direction on you in terms of, you know, are we doing the right thing? Is this something that's important to this community? Is this something we should move forward on? So, thank you, Samara.
Any questions?
Christine Asparas, while I completely understand the need for this in the town board that I would say I do feel is an infringement on my rights, but I have to go with, unfortunately, we have to let some of that go. I would like to make an amendment for section 2, number 5, on page 73, to remove the section on overgrown grass or leaves of at least one foot in length and/or graffiti, not and/or graffiti, because it's kind of an infringement on what people can consider arts and their self-expression and their... If I were to grow paragraphs...
I will just add that, thank you for pointing that out, and that was something that was left in here, a distant error, because I did come up at the meetings, and we do want to support all the inner guard systems.
If you are going to approach, they basically, excuse me, basically, they offer it as an amendment, page 73, section 2, number 5.
Section 2, number 5.
Yeah.
They're hoping to consider and vote on my thing, so we don't need to actually go over there.
I've been instructed that this is a non-binding vote because we're not going to change what they've written, although they will consider whatever you want in their own way of...
So, I and my husband are very, we have a lot of concern. My reading of this, and I talked to the guys earlier before the meeting, but I wanted to have them reiterate, this ordinance, according to the select board, has to do with vacant buildings. It's a little ambiguous when you read, the purpose of the ordinance is to define what constitutes vacant buildings, comma, blighted premises, comma, dangerous property, comma, and public nuisances. That's where I get a little concerned that 10 years from now, and this great board is no longer here, somebody can come along and reinterpret this ordinance. I want to make very clear in the language in this that this refers to vacant buildings, not buildings which are occupied and decrepit, dilapidated, is the eye of the beholder. You know, my trailer, somebody else's rustic tavern, I don't know, but these kinds of ordinances, as a taxpayer and somebody who's lived here for 20 years and have sat through board meetings where people in charge of zoning and DRB have insulted our town's people over the years because they don't like junk cars, they don't like the way the house is not painted. So I would like you to revisit some of the language and make it a little clearer that this is about buildings that have been abandoned or vacant. And are these buildings, do they have taxes being paid on them? If there's not, if they're still being maintained and their property taxes are paid, that's not abandoned. You know, if they're on a delinquent tax list, if the owners are gone, but if you, it's a fine line. This is a slippery slope. It scares me. So that's all I have to say.
Other comments?
I understand what Tosca's saying, but I saw that buildings owned by banks who do not maintain the buildings, but pay the taxes.
I agree. It's the language.
So, is that considered abandonment? But if they don't maintain it, it's falling down.
I guess, my point is, you need to be really clear that it's about vacant buildings and not, your house is ugly and you don't mow your lawn.
Yeah, that's the intent of it. One of the definitions in the ordinance is that the building can't have been occupied for at least 180 days, that's half a year, that no one has lived in that building or occupied that building, or even come under peruse of it. And the process really is this, the vacant buildings, sorry, I thought I would allow them. The, to be considered for this, first definition is that the building has to be vacant for at least 180 days, half a year, before it even comes under this ordinance. The second thing that has to happen is there has to be a formal complaint. One of the things that came up in the first public hearing was, you know, does it have to be, can it be an anonymous complaint? Does it have to be written and so forth? And we debated that and really felt that if the building wasn't being a detriment to the community, a danger to the community, then someone should be willing to put their name to that. And we don't want a situation where people, as Tosca was suggesting, are just, oh, I don't like my neighbors, so I'm going to cause some problems for him or her. So there's a process where there would be a building officer who would be in an appointed position, sort of like a constable, who would go and inspect the building on the premises if possible, if not, from the street, and would make a determination based on the definitions in this ordinance as to whether the building constitutes a dangerous building. And if that's the case, then would work with the building owner to correct. I think our goal here really is to create a carrot-and-stick situation for these banks and absentee landlords and... and absentee landlords and people that are letting these buildings fall down and damage our values in the community by saying, you know, "You're very welcome to just leave this building in our town to, you know, for the communities to be falling down and for kids potentially to be getting hurt if you want to, but there's going to be costs involved. You can choose to pay a hundred dollars a day and keep doing that, or you can fix the building, or you can sell the building to someone who will fix it." That's really what we were hoping for, was some type of incentive program to say, you know, "We really want to discourage you from letting an isolated danger sit here abandoned in our town." That was what the original people that came to us were hoping for. That's the intent, that's the only intent. It's a vacant building ordinance, it's not a building ordinance.
Does it apply just to banks and people that can afford to find...
We can't legally designate who the owners are, can't single out individuals. This type of owner is the only people we're singling out. Legally, we can't do that.
Equally applies, like somebody can't afford to keep up their, to maintain the building...
If it's vacant, yeah, if it's dangerous. Yeah.
Is there any sort of help that you would offer, or is it like vacant for people to pour?
No, I think your point is very well taken, and the board can consider that, and there's languaging here whereby if the owner of the building does come to the board regarding the complaint, the board can issue, I believe what's called a vacant building permit, essentially with the conditions so that we don't enter into a situation where you have someone, as you're describing, who can't afford to do what might be required, but at that time, you take that into consideration.
When you say a yes vote on this is binding, what does that mean? If we vote yes, does that mean the ordinance will go into effect? Or is there a process for that? Because I have concerns about it as well.
So this is just an advisory vote, so if the meeting votes yes, doesn't it mean that the ordinance goes into effect?
What is the process?
The process would be from today to take what we hear from the room and go back to the board and determine what the next step would be. So for example, if 100% of the room said, "Yay, go for it," we'd probably decide to do it. If it was a 50-50 split, we probably would go back to the drawing board and hold more meetings. If 100% of the room said, "I'll add it here," we'd probably just walk away, so...
Will we be able to vote on the ordinance when it's written the way you want it to be written ultimately?
No, the, so the process for passing ordinance is the board votes the pass of ordinance. That being said, the board would try to allow for as much possible public comment opportunities as we can.
I apologize for not being on my homework and looking at this earlier, but I see under the section 3 of authority of the town health officer and select board, it says, noting in this ordinance, the authority of the town of Montgomery Health Officer or Select Board to take any action from within under 18 BSA, section 126, 127, etc. I'm wondering how much of that, to what extent does that authority relieve the problem that we're talking about?
Obviously, you know, this is something that we have to put in here because we don't want to impede on the health officer's responsibilities and ability to do his or her job. But I think, I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
My question is, under the existing authority of the select board and the health board, so that's upon my statute, to what extent can use of that authority relieve the worst of the problem?
You know what? I would probably ask Sue if she could address that question.
Yeah, I don't think it can because I just asked this. Because we don't have a dated building ordinance, I complain about a building that people are leaving illegally, but I have no right to go to that building. I expect it to be really in a certain way, so they can live there.
And the other issue varies, she doesn't have... And the other issue is she has no ability to levy a fine to encourage those absentee landlords to fix up the property. She has no authority to do it.
And the building is no right to order, no will.
Questions post ordinance? Is this something that the select board is going to be working on when they're working with the council of development to develop a school farther and more in depth than seeing what other communities, have they offered that information? I know you've been doing a lot of your own research, but is this something that is going to be on the table as well with them?
Well, everything's on the table with them. We had not planned to use that process to deal with this, but something's always, you know, everything is, the nice thing about the process that's going to go forward in June, July is the community decides what's on.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that process is absolutely, you know, directed by the town. So anyone in the town that brings it up as an issue, it will then be an issue for consideration. My understanding of the process is we will not be wordsmithing policy in that process. And so, what will be coming out of that process is directed around an action plan of which things you want to work on, and then an establishment of actionable teams from the town to work on it. So if this ordinance isn't passed by that point, and maybe I had a really strong word that we shouldn't do this right now, that we want to go through that process and see if emergency priority, for example, then I would expect that there would be a task force or some directive coming out of that, but it wouldn't be a vehicle for working on wording and languaging and improving a policy.
Tosca?
My other question, page 78, where you talk about the appeal of prior existing ordinances. So the enactment of this ordinance shall repeal all other ordinances of the town of Montgomery that regulate the topics. A lot of the stuff that I'm reading in here feels redundant and is already in our zoning regulations, in terms of fire damage buildings, you have 365 days to move that. So I'm wondering how zoning laws are voted on by the public this time? Is overlapping some of those? Is there some kind of, you know, redundancy question is also a concern for me because I think that there's already some of this language in our zoning bylaws that address some of this stuff. Not all of it, but...
Yeah, I just like clarification, because what this says is, shall the town, shall we recommend the select board that they adopt this vacant and dangerous building ordinance as proposed? Doesn't say it's non-binding, doesn't, I think it's worded.
Well, it's a recommendation. Yeah, we're looking for a recommendation. What do you recommend we do?
I agree, okay.
Okay, in terms of zoning, some of these issues can be dealt with through zoning, and it just occurred to me, well, this says that it overrides existing ordinances, but the select board cannot, by adoption of an ordinance, override, overturn the zoning ordinance that has been done by a town vote, which is how we do it, so I'm not concerned about that.
I think I pointed out, the select board should have the authority to adopt ordinance, but this is simply recommendations. But if you do adopt the ordinance, I would suggest that other definitions, if you have some very clear definitions, you define words, for example, define dilapidation, like demolition is defined. Most ordinance do have very clear definitions of various words, so there's no misunderstanding. And also, I notice there's a number of paragraphs in here that are unnumbered. I would suggest you probably will see format for ordinances and numbering of such paragraphs, etc.
Good feedback, thank you.
Christine Asparas, why an appointed, why an appointed building safety officer and not an elected?
The only reason I can say that is if we looked at all the other towns that have similar ordinances, and every one of their building safety officers are appointed, it's not elected.
Anyone else? If not, we can proceed to the vote. There's no objection. No objection having been heard. Article 11, shall the town recommend the select board adopt a vacant and dangerous building ordinance as proposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no?
No.
I believe the ayes have it.
Tosca, shut your mic off.
Does anyone request a vision?
Can we call a hand together?
Yes, we can, because we have seven people, I'm talking, seven is under the belt. Please, if you are in favor of, shall the town recommend the select board adopt a vacant and dangerous building ordinance, please raise your hand.
As written, as written.
Hands up. Okay. Yep, you're welcome.
All those opposed, please raise your hand. Real fans? 43 to 19 in favor. 43 to 19 in favor. The town has voted to recommend the select board adopt the vacant and dangerous building ordinance as proposed.
Now, that said, I think we should be clear that all of the feedback that we've gotten is going to be incorporated in some way into consideration because we want an ordinance that most of the people in town are going to be happy with, and it's going to improve our town, not that we'll divide it. So, thank you very much for the feedback, it was great.
Thank you.
Be on our agenda in future meetings so that you guys can come and give us your ideas.
I will just encourage you, so everyone try to have our email address. If you don't, it's montgomeryselectboard@email.com for real easy. Please email us any comments, recommendations, adjusted language, anything like that. Thank you.
Article 12, shall the town recommend the select board publish the full delinquent tax collector's report, including names and amounts of delinquent property owners as of December 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery, Montgomerytown, and Montgomery School District 2018 reports. Your motion? Your motion? I'll move, their second. Move and seconded that the town recommend the select board publish the full delinquent tax collector's report, including names and amounts of delinquent property owners as of December 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery, Montgomery School District 2018 reports. Discussion?
Yeah. This has come up a number of times, the test here, and the intent is not to embarrass anybody, the intent is to encourage us to pay our taxes on time, which is a benefit to everybody. And I'll tell you, it sure works for me.
Sorry. I'm Bernadette Early, and good morning, neighbors. I'm a little bit nervous to be speaking today. Matter of fact, I'm actually shaking, and I wish I wasn't feeling that way. So I, because this is the first time I've ever spoken in Montgomery Center town meeting, but please be kind to me. First of all, I need to take 60 seconds to thank everyone in this town who has helped to keep Miracle, my service dog, alive. I first of all want you to know that not only did you help her, help me, but you have helped so many people that you can't even believe. Shuttens, hospitals, nursing homes, strangers in the supermarkets, they have all been touched by Miracle. So please know in your heart, those of you that have helped, either financially, through thots and prayers, through rides, through walks, through whatever, when she was so ill with cancer, you've got to go to bed tonight and say, "You did a really good thing." Thank you. Now, I was the one, maybe there were other people, but I know that I was the one that have been for years not liking the delinquent taxes printed in the book. Okay, why I'm nervous to be speaking today about this is because when I moved to God's country, as I lovingly call this part of Vermont, I was told, "You've got to be careful, you're a flatlander." So I realized, because I lived on an island, that people called, the people that came to the island were washershores. So I was ready for the flatlander piece. But then it was a couple of years later that a friend of mine, a Vermonter, said to me, "Bernadette, do not tell anybody where you're from." And I said, "I know, I'm a flatlander. No, you're worse than that. You're from Massachusetts and you're a masshole." So I think maybe I earned that. Maybe I earned that. Okay, fine. With that being said, I still love Vermont. You're stuck with me. I love it here. I haven't liked, when it gets printed in the book, "Delinquent taxes." And no, I have not been on that list, but I've been on a lot of bad lists, but I haven't been on that one. So, I was more afraid to bring this to anybody's attention because I went to a couple of Vermonters through the years, and I said, "Why do you hate flatlanders and massholes so much? Please tell me, I really want to know." And I've had some really outspoken, as I can be myself, tell me why. You all come here, you want to make changes, you sell your expensive houses in Massachusetts, New York, or Timbuktu, you want to come here and have bigger and better houses here, bigger and better schools, and then you raise our taxes, and then you can't handle the winters, and then you leave. That was a couple of them. Then, when I started helping people in the community or outside of the community, I tried to help this paraplegic in St. Albans. We help our own. We help our own. And they wouldn't help me, the woman in St. Albans that was a paraplegic. So again, where am I going with this? And I see your hand being raised. I'm going to say this. I'm really begging you, and myself, when one finger is pointing out at you, three are pointing back at me. When you're pointing one finger out at me or other people, three are pointing back at you. I have a lot to learn about that, I need your help with that. And one of the ways I'm going to ask you to help with that is, please stop doing this publishing of names. It's not a Vermont law, I looked into it, a lot of states do not do it anymore. I think that some people that are on that list, year after year, are really struggling. And yes, there are the people I've been told that should be paying their taxes and they can pay their taxes and they don't. They get penalized, they get fined, their houses will go into foreclosure. Isn't that enough? Why do you have to publish this? And yes, it is an humiliation to some people who really do care. So I am asking you that we all work together as loving neighbors. There's too much anger in the world, too much hate in the world. We are God's country, we are beautiful here. Stop publishing that list, please. Thank you.
Other comments? If not, we can proceed with the vote on article 12, if there's no objection. No objection having been heard. Article 12, shall the town recommend the select board publish the full delinquent tax collector's report, including names and amounts of delinquent property owners as of December 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery, Montgomerytown School Districts, 2018... 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery and Montgomerytown School District 2018 reports? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
No.
The ayes have it? I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. And with adopted, article 12, as written. Article 13. Shall the town recommend the select board publish a list of delinquent water accounts, including names and amounts of those delinquent accounts, as of December 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery and Montgomery School District 2018 reports? Is there a motion?
No move.
So move and seconded.
Second.
Move and seconded that the town recommend the select board publish a list of delinquent water accounts, including names and amounts of those delinquent accounts, as of December 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery and Montgomerytown and Montgomery School District 2018 reports? Discussion. Oscar.
Is this published now?
No.
I would strongly recommend that we don't. I don't believe, I think tax, I agree with Bernadette 100%. We're asking people to come to this meeting, participate in our town government, and people whose names are on these lists have nothing to do with coming in here and being judged. And water bills are not property taxes. So I totally disagree with that. Same thing, our chips, I don't want to, I don't want to milk my neighbors who are going to afford to pay their water bill. There's internal things in place. Shut the water off. There's many things you can do. We might get a lot more difference, different kinds of people to come into this building and participate in these meetings if they weren't sitting on these lists, so.
I would also like to say that I'm not in favor of this article in that the water department as a service has additional mechanisms in place that allow us to pursue these fees when the water, or the accounts become delinquent. We currently have maybe six accounts that have a substantial balance, substantial, I mean, maybe a quarter's worth of service. Other than that, we do have one property that is being put up for sale because, or because it's been dormant since about 2012, and it's a bang-on property and they're refusing to pay the water. The majority of the remaining balances in the water department right now are made up of small balances of up to $5 to $10, which could be interest primarily because they missed their October payment by a few days. And then they wait until the next quarter when they get billed in January. So you're looking at publishing a list of 20-plus names of people who owe $5 to the water department. And so I think that this particular amendment, again, is much different than the property taxes, not that I agree with publishing the delinquent property taxes, but it's an entirely different bear, and I would urge you to vote no.
Mary?
I have a question. Will a person doing a title search be able to determine from other records at the town clerk's office without making a phone call?
It's my understanding that as part of a title search, they are required to ask the municipality whether or not a property is being served by municipal water. And I don't think that I've ever come across in the past 10 years, an instance where property transferred where that water delinquency is little as $5, actually $0.48, there was transferred that reconciled the $0.48 difference. So they ask when they come in, it is a lien on the property and it does follow the property.
My question is, is the information available at the town clerk's office?
Absolutely.
My question is, what is the source of this agenda item? And if that source can explain what the rationale is behind it?
So this agenda item was strictly just looking at item 12 being there. We thought, hey, why not ask this one too? I mean, there was no push behind this. There's no need that the board, I think, has articulated. It was more just a case of, hey, we want to ask the voters item 12, let's ask them item 13 too.
Well, first of all, there should not be delinquent tax or delinquent water bills unless the property is in foreclosure. All of the occupants have a letter from the document certificating the property. You should send those pink sheets out within the 31st day, and you follow that pink sheet. The legislature has given the all-water systems, the legislature, very clear, you should apply that to how it's like water. And I don't know, like, why, why they ever done an electric charge to show up here? I would absolutely find that.
The accounts that I mentioned are vacant properties. The small balances in interest are true because they have paid their water bill maybe a day or two late, and that interest is carried over until the following bill. So I don't know that my definition, or the definition of delinquent covers interest. The bond and the usage have been paid on the majority of the bills, except those properties that are vacant.
Other questions? Discussion? If not, we can proceed to the vote.
We don't, Deanna does for us. But yes, those pink sheets do go out. Yes.
Then the water show off?
Yes.
All the pink sheet?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Questions? If not, we can proceed to the vote. If there's no objection.
I would just add that for these vacant properties, any usage that hasn't been paid before they were disconnected, those usage fees have ceased. But based on the financing that was received for the implementation of the water system, the bond fees still accrue on all of those accounts. So that makes up the majority of the delinquencies on file.
Anyone else? If not, again, we can proceed to the vote. If there's no objection, no one speaks up, no objection having been heard. The motion on the floor is article 13. Shall the town recommend the select board publish a list of delinquent water accounts, including names and amounts of those delinquent accounts, as of December 31st, 2018, in the town of Montgomery and Montgomery School District 2018 reports? All those in favor say aye.
You got it.
Most say no.
No.
The noes have it, and article 13 has failed. Article 14. Shall the town vote to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be held, to be allotted to a fund for conservation, hereby establishing a conservation reserve fund in accordance with 24 BSA, section 2804. The fund will be saved and used to leverage additional monies to conserve land in the public interest. Priorities will be placed on community projects and/or projects that are not traditionally funded by local, state, or federal conservation entities or agencies. This money may be held and reserved over a number of years before being used for a specific project. Public hearings will be held prior to the use of any monies from the conservation reserve fund, awarded at the discretion of the select board by recommendation of the conservation commission. This appropriation would be contingent on the annual approval by the voters of Montgomery. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, move and seconded, as read.
That was Pat Karma that made that motion?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Mary?
Just a question, am I correct that on $100,000 of property, it will be $50?
I think it's $5 for every $100,000 evaluation we got.
And we was five.
Yeah. $5 is for every $100,000 evaluation.
Any others? Any questions? Comments? If not, anyone?
Can we have Charlie talk a little bit about it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to if you want. Yes. So, um, there is a, there is a brief, two-page explanation of this, page 71, 72 of the town report. Um, this is something that the conservation commission has been discussing for a number of years, but in past years has held off asking for an item on the warning, just because in past years we've seen other burdens on the tax rate that we didn't want to impose additional burdens. This year, given the projected decrease in the tax rate, we decided it was a good year to ask. And so this fund would be modeled under, a similar fund in other towns, more than 50 towns in Vermont have such conservation funds. As the explanation in the town report lays out, the fund would be used to conserve land in the public good. And so what, what does that mean? Basically, this would go towards tapping into helping either purchase and fee or acquire easements on land in the town that have a public purpose or a public good associated with them. These could be agricultural land or forest land. Some of the benefits of conserved land that are outlined in the town report are, one is that they can help reduce property tax burdens on local residents. Conserved lands don't require services, so don't put a burden on things like roads or schools. They can also help improve property tax values. There's something economists call the association principle or something like that whereby property values on adjacent lands tend to go up in the vicinity of conserved lands. Conserved lands also have potential to have an economic benefit to the community in terms of supporting both agriculture or the wood products industry. Other towns have seen associated benefits to businesses within a community. There's a town in Waitsfield that's used money like this to purchase land which have become a hub for background screening, so this is a town associated with, has seen a boom. Other examples of communities that have used these monies are neighbors next door in Innesburg, purchased a conservative canoe launch on the Sisfoi River, which is now part of the northern, northern, uproot canoe trail. Northern chorus canoe trail. I should know that word probably. The town of Georgia recently conserved a town forest with extensive hiking trails. The town of Westford recently purchased a town for addition to the elementary school, which has a vast trail system extended into existing trail systems in town, connecting the school with the community center. Another point on these conservation easements is that the vast majority of them do require some degree of public access. So conservation easement could also be in certain, ensuring access to community members to these lands in perpetuity. There are a number of properties in town right now that are conserved that have such resources on them. So that's kind of a five-minute spiel. Happy to answer any other questions, though.
Anyone?
A few years ago, we had a portion of the Trout River that was put into conservation. Would this also allow other property owners along the trout to utilize this program, or is that separate from this?
So there's two things with the trout right now. One is the wild and scenic program. The other one, I think you might be mentioning, has to do with the Vermont River Conservancy, which does work with landowners to put easements on sections of the river to protect them. So these funds would allow the town or community members to leverage greater funds. So as opportunities present themselves to the town or to residents, these monies could help draw those dollars in. Conservation projects often take a vast sum of money that include multiple partners, and having a dedicated local source, the community has explicitly said, "We have this here in support of these ends," will help draw more dollars down toward these projects.
Richard Boach, convince me that you're not opening the door to 1% next year, 2% a year after, and 3% a year after that.
So this article was explicitly written to make sure that the allocation would be voted on every year at town meeting by the voters. Other measures in the past in towns have things that are voted on a three- or a five-year period. So we explicitly put this in the warning so that it would be voted on every year at town meeting. So if the situation in town changed, the voters could certainly vote it down. Or they could vote it up if they wanted to make it 1%, but, or 1 penny, not 1%. So, so the door is definitely not open for this automatically increasing expression of voters in Montgomery.
Questions? Comments?
To the extent that this ties into the community visits program, one of the pieces that Paul mentioned around that program that is of a particular attraction to the board in choosing to go forward with them, is that they bring in a whole host of additional resources to the town, including a whole bunch of different philanthropic and funding resources. So we, as a town, value conservation-minded projects that particularly given how much recreation plays as a dominant economic engine for this, for this town, it is really supportive in terms of being able to attract and reaffirm our commitment to those priorities through that process when other funders are brought into our town through a formalized process. If we decide as a town that there is a particular conservation-related improvement or enhancement or project in our town that we hold strong value, we've seen a few of those already come up in the last year or so. This is really, this further makes it, this makes it a lot easier for those institutions to be able to support us.
Anyone else? If not, we can proceed to the vote. If there is no objection. No objection having been heard. Article 14. That the town vote to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allotted to a fund for conservation, hereby establishing a conservation reserve fund in accordance with 24 BSA, section 2804. The fund will be saved and used to leverage additional monies to conserve land in the public interest. Priorities will be placed on community projects and/or projects that are not traditionally funded by local, state, or federal conservation entities or agencies. This money may be held and reserved over a number of years before being used for a specific project. Public hearings will be held prior to the use of any monies from the conservation reserve fund, awarded at the discretion of the select board by recommendation of the conservation commission. This appropriation would be contingent on the annual approval by voters of Montgomery. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it, and with approved, article 14, as read. Article 15. Shall the town vote to change the final property tax installment date to the second Friday in November, currently the second Friday in October, to better accommodate the Vermont Department of Taxants Homestead Declaration and State Payman Download Schedule? So, move and seconded. Move and seconded that the town vote to change the final property tax installment due to the flu to the second Fri, February, November, which is heard the second February Friday law. We change the final property tax installment due to the second Friday in November, to better accommodate the Vermont Department of Taxants Homestead Declaration and State Payman Download Schedule. Discussion. Pat?
Yeah, um, how does this affect the town's cash flow? For that extra month of delay and getting the money?
Sure. The town is not adversely affected by the delay in this money. The entity that would be adversely affected would potentially be the school district. Following our final tax due date, the treasurer has 20 days to remit the payment in full, which last year was about $1.9 million, to the town school district. Every year, typically in mid-August, their, or their accounts start to dry up. And the treasurer, because I'm the treasurer of both entities, the town has the ability to make a short-term loan as opposed to sending the school out to banks to receive tax anticipation notes. The reason that I'm asking for the town to be able to do this, the state has implemented a download process where they send us not only homestead declarations, which for the town of Montgomery means that homesteads receive about a 20% lower tax rate, and there are the state payments that are associated with the majority of those. We end up in November owing back to the taxpayers around $26,000 of taxes that we're not actually due. It creates for the listers and the treasurer's office an extreme administrative burden in order to get the money back to the taxpayers and wait for each of these downloads to come. The final one comes typically November 1st, so that's why we're asking for this. I would have asked for the first Friday in November, but every other year, obviously it's a election year, which would be unreasonable to ask the clerk and treasurer's office to administer that final deadline during that first week of November.
Questions?
Just to clarify, Deanna, I'm not concerned about the school having its funding when it's necessary because we can borrow from the town, so that's not necessary.
These short-term loans have been happening between the town and the school since I came in. on board with Renee in 2008. It's not unusual for towns that have their clerk and treasurer for the town also be the clerk and treasurer for the school for this to happen.
Any other questions? Mary?
Would this also relieve the treasurer and town clerk from the extra work burden presented by those councilors who do not file their federal income tax until the last day of the October extension?
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? If there's none, we can proceed to the vote if there's no objection. No objection having been heard. Article 15, that the town change the final property tax installment date to the second Friday in November to better accommodate the Vermont Department of Taxants Homestead Declaration and State Payman Download Schedule. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. The ayes have it, and we voted Article 15 as read. Article 16, can do any other business property done at said meeting? Renee?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to ask if it pleases the attendees for a show of hands. It's come up over the past several years in other towns as to whether or not to publish vital statistics in the town report. It's been a longstanding tradition, and a lot of people are very excited to see their marriages or births, not so much the deaths, in the town report. But there is a concern now that we're publishing our town reports online that there may be an identity issue with that of people being able to see, you know, when children are born, dates of birth, et cetera. So if there is any support to remove that report or not, I'd like to at least see a show of hands for next year's town report.
The end is talking about the publishing of the vital statistics, births, deaths, marriages, and whether or not we should continue to do that. Any discussion? Tascia?
I definitely look at them, but I mean, is there a way of publishing without any specific dates?
We can do whatever.
Or information of people, you know?
So technically, the publishing of the town report is the responsibility of the town auditors. I'm not quite sure when the last time the town auditors had any real role in the publishing of the town report. I don't know if there are any former auditors here that could say, but I do know that since I've been here, it has been the act of the select board and the town clerk that have put this together. So ultimately, it's up to the select board to decide whether or not this report continues in the town report, but I'm just looking for your feedback.
Could I ask a question? If we were to just publish the births and deaths by month, just say February, and just list the names, and not have an exact part date, would that probably solve the problem of potential end of date?
I think that would make it much better. Most towns just go by the way of getting rid of the report altogether.
Could it be published in the report with that section of the report not put online?
It's a published document at that point, and these are all public records anyway, but you would have to come into my office to obtain that information. Again, the select board can publish this report in whatever fashion they suggest.
Anyone?
If you're worried about dates, then don't publish it. Don't publish the dates, but it's nice to see our new additions, et cetera.
Other comments? Mary?
I know, I use it a lot to help bring new parents into the community, into playgroups, to get families involved with our community. I've got a helpful tool. I don't know if I necessarily use the day or the month specifically. I know they probably use it at the school for planning who's going to be in the next year for class size purposes.
Well, just to point out, there is always a means to obtain that information. You just wouldn't be able to find it in the town report if this select board chose not to publish it. All that data is still available. I don't personally think that it should be gone completely, but I wanted to get the will of voters.
Mary?
I like them. I have my books for when my kids are born, so they're just nice to see.
Anyone else?
On that subject or something else?
On this subject. On the publishing of the vital statistics. This is non-binding, but we're just looking for a sense of the crowd. Any other comments? And I guess the question is whether or not we want to continue to publish these vital statistics, births, deaths, marriages. Any other comments? If not, does vote on this non-binding resolution to continue to publish? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Seems to be the, somebody seems to want to continue to publish these. Any other non-binding business? Brent?
It's been, has been brought to my attention that I should request or ask the select board in future town reports to include a more detailed description of monies used in our town, roads. Since it's a large line item, one of the larger line items, just so that it's clear, instead of going through 10 different pages on the town report, just a basic report, okay, we reported, we placed a call order here, we paved this, we did whatever, just so it's clearer to the people. Yes, we can do that.
That was going to stay on?
No, that was, no, that was from somebody in that board.
Just a point of clarification on the back cover, the planning commission meets at 6:00 and not 7:00.
Where is that located?
On the back inside cover.
Back inside cover? And the planning commission is at 6, on the second Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mary?
I would like to ask the town to instruct our congressional delegation to support H.R. 669 and Senate Bill 200, which are bills to prohibit the conduct of a first-use nuclear strike absent a declaration of war by Congress. The meat of the bill, prohibitions like this aid, not the same as any other provisional bill, the president may not directly enforce the United States to conduct a first-use nuclear strike unless the strike is conducted pursuant to a declaration of war by Congress that expressly authorizes such strike.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second in.
Can I, can I bridge that just to say to support H.R. 669 and S.200?
Yes, well, I would add to prohibit the conduct of a first-use nuclear strike absent a declaration of war by Congress.
It's been moved and seconded that we, that this assembly approved a non-binding by the effort of Bill to support House of Representatives Bill 669 and Senate Bill 200 to prohibit the conduct of a first-use nuclear strike absent a declaration of war by Congress. Any discussion? Jacob?
Can you define first use? This is non-natalatory.
Okay. It is defined in section B. First-use nuclear strike defined. This is actually the term for a first-use nuclear strike, meaning an attack using nuclear weapons against an enemy that is conducted without the president determining that the enemy has further drawn a nuclear strike against the United States or an ally of the United States.
Any discussion?
Here.
Any discussion? Is it just a sense of the assembly? No discussion, let's proceed with the vote that we, the town, support the House of Representatives Bill 669 and the Senate Bill 200, which are bills to prohibit the conduct of a first-use nuclear strike absent a declaration of war by Congress. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Good for us, we approve it. Anybody else?
For my sake.
I don't want to belabor, I don't want to belabor the ambulance discussion, but I am curious. I understand that our volunteers felt like they have served amazingly for many decades. What would it take for Montgomery to reestablish a paid, no longer volunteer, but paid ambulance service? It may just be so insanely costly, but has that been explored? That difference for it's between Ennisburg and Montgomery in mud season, snowy roads, that's, could be the difference between life and death for someone.
So we haven't actually priced out what that would cost. We can certainly look into it, looking at comparable for the annual service. That might also be a good discussion if it rises to the top for the DCRD program.
Yeah. I mean, and I've had someone recently say for them, that might be the reason they don't stay in Montgomery, because they have existing health problems and that time difference. So it's hard to say, will we not, will we have people who don't want to move here because that's not a service we provide? Will we have people who need because that's not a service we provide? But more significantly, are we going to have people who die because that's not a service we can provide anymore? You know, I understand, these volunteers are amazing. Kevin Scheffler and Morgan have been to my place, and Jade and Chris on many occasions. I'm so grateful for that. I understand they'll be available potentially, but that, I find this distance from Ennisburg so distressing. And, you know, what I want to know, I want to see the numbers, like what would it look like on my tax bill for us to hire full-time ambulance support that lives here in Montgomery and can access us a lot faster than folks coming from Ennisburg? It may just not be cost-effective or practical, but it's too significant to not explore.
I have so much intimate relationship with the rescue squad. Part of it. The average salary for an EMT, this is just a first level, EMT, is $34,000 a year. That's not an advanced EMT, it's not a paramedic. So ambulance can't move unless you've got at least two to respond. That's really been the challenge we've had because we, as volunteers have dwindled, we haven't had enough people to cover the shifts. We actually have had out-of-town ambulance service for several years now. Coverage between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. in this town has been done by Richford. We have not had local ambulance service during the daytime hours for quite a few number of years. So you take $34,000, you multiply times two, and then multiply time all the shifts that you're going to have to cover to get service, you know, we're talking about a very, very significant sum of money. Whether it's worth that to us, that's a debate we should have, but in looking at the calendar in January, when it became clear that the number of volunteers to cover shifts was at the point where we couldn't even get 12-hour coverage, you know, Morgan and Kevin came to us very reluctantly and said, you know, "We just can't keep this up. We don't have the people." We have, you know, we've spent money on the town to pay for training for people, we just haven't had the people. And so going forward, the short-term solution was, let's find the best ambulance service to provide us 24-hour coverage, and that service was Ennisburg. It's nice that we have first responders who are still here that still want to help, and if they're here and they're available, they're going to, they're going to answer that radio and stabilize the situation until an ambulance arrives from Ennisburg. It's not the ideal situation. It's not what any of us want. We all want the same thing you do. It's just a reality that there's just not enough people to do it, and you start hiring a full ambulance service, and I don't know what the effect of your individual tax bill would be, but it would be horrendous, I'm sure. Now, Ennisburg will be reaching out to people about a subscription service where, and I think that is that information in the town report, where you can subscribe to their service and basically cover, and I think you have multiple visits, you only pay a certain amount. I'm not sure if it's managed.
It's right in the town report.
Yeah. But we did initially look at the cost of it. We haven't done a deep dive on it, but when we started figuring out salaries for a licensed EMT, finding an EMT, beginning with, but paying for licensed DMTs to cover all these shifts, it just really didn't make sense, unfortunately.
Page anyone?
Twice a meeting. I have to use the ambulance service personally, as have my neighbors, and one of the things we keep hearing, Ennisburg, Ennisburg, or Ennisburg, that there have been times that Ennisburg was tied up, and they couldn't get to us, and then Richford was tied up. So there's been some, there's been some scenarios that are pretty unnerving, so we don't have just Ennisburg. They have their own as well, and so does Richford, but that is an unnerving piece.
There is a mutual agreement between all of the towns in the area, so if Ennisburg gets tied up, Richford would respond, and even, even over on the other side of Mountain Jay would respond.
Brent, did you answer?
No, it's all covered.
Mary?
In addition to the cost of paying for the salaries, personnel, we would need a new ambulance and to maintain it, and they are very expensive, and to maintain them with all the new regulations are very expensive. You can't have out-of-date tubes and still be able to run. You have to pay for multiple $500 apiece in, like, epi pens. You've got a certain number of them. You have to, there's a lot of regulation, it's just very expensive, and so you have to include all of those costs of salary too when you're doing that. We need a new ambulance if we're going to, if we're going to do this.
And that's what I just want to know. I'm like, I'm like...
Please, 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 please be fine through the chair. Mary?
I have an observation that it's something to do with the ambulance or rescue. Is it appropriate now, or you want?
Any other talk on the ambulance?
Just out of curiosity, how many volunteers would it take if we weren't having this service available, and assuming, not assuming any sort of salary, but the possibility of getting a new ambulance, if that was a lot for the town, how many volunteers would ideally power a town, maybe one or more?
I would defer to Kevin or Morgan on that, but just a cursory guess, I would probably say you would need at least eight people.
How many do we have now?
Five. Oh, no, I mean, the high sign of ten is a better number. And we have, we have, we have four people.
Maybe more.
Yeah, we have four people right now that are able to cover shifts on a regular basis, and a couple more that can catch and catch again, but right now, we're down to four people. And that, that just...
Any other discussion?
I just had a question about the subscription service. So the town, our town is going to be paying, Ennisburg, for the ambulance, so what does the subscription, how does that pertain?
Brent? It covers the hundreds of dollars that cost you or your insurance company to be transported by the ambulance.
So if you...
We paid them for the service, but you as an individual, if you're transporting, if you administer oxygen, several different things on the list, it costs you quite a bit. That subscription is a deal.
Oh, I'll consider it.
You may never use it all.
It's a frequent user program, I know. That's a good way to put it, but if you were somebody that might get called needing ambulance service regularly, I would definitely do it. It's going to cut your costs tremendously if you have to.
The week goes for the ambulance, too.
Yeah, it's terribly expensive, so yeah.
So just to follow up on the question about, you know, what's that minimum threshold for volunteers? What would that look like? And also, I mean, Darren, I hear what you're saying about salary, but is there some in-between volunteer nothing and salary, for instance? I mean, we have all sorts of town officials that get stipends, you know, can we incentivize the amazing work that our EMT volunteers do for the town by some sort of in-between $34,000 a year and nothing? What, I want to know, how much does an ambulance, fully tripped-out, cost, and what does the maintenance fee, what does it look like? Like, if, if these are all like these vagaries of cost, you know, yes, you say it could be a hit on taxes, right, and then it just is, all right, conversation's done, we rely on the ambulance service in Richford and Ennisburg, but it's still vague enough that I don't know what that entails. in Richford and Ennisburg, but it's still vague enough that I don't know what that impact on my taxes would be if we could get the personnel trained up and reinvigorate and provide some sort of financial incentive to make it worth those, their time and their expertise that they bring to an emergency situation? And then what is ambulance cost? A physical upgrade? The new ambulance? What does the loan look like for that ambulance? How do we amortize that over however many years for each tax-paying, you know, tax-paying bill per town's person? Like, I want to know. I mean, I'm signing up for the frequent flyer program for Ennisburg, for sure, which I didn't know was a thing, I appreciate that, but again, I think it's so important, and you may never use that service, but you'll be bummed when it's not available for you if you need it.
Again, I think those are very valid points, and I think...
Please, please.
Answer. January. That was Mary. But I believe that some of these questions are questions that, once we start working with this rural development, a lot of these questions could be addressed there, and finding out what is available. I mean, you want to know how much of ambulance cost, I mean, Google it. You know, I mean, those are probably, you can get the facts, you don't have to back, you know, start doing your own research, and getting a committee together, you might be part of that committee.
Any other comments, and the rescue squad?
I'd just like to add that the ambulance service in Richford and Ennisburg, and I'm on the firefighter, so I see these guys a lot, their response time is pretty quick. They're in-house, ready to go, the minute the call comes in, they get in the wagon and then move it. Now, as a volunteer firefighter and volunteer ambulance people, you have to drive to the station. You have to respond on radio if you're driving to the station, which is a problem with communications now. If they don't get a response from you in a certain amount of time, then they send out on the run cars, they go to the next available service. So if we just stick with this for now, I think you're not going to see like a huge lapse in time and response, and it's actually going to be better for the first responders, because they don't have to drive to the station, they can go directly to the house and stabilize, which they know how to do. Transportation is going to take a while anyway, so, you know, even if they go to the station, get the ambulance, that takes some time, drive to your house, they're still not going to be loading the patient before Ennisburg would get there. It's not really going to be a huge lapse in service for the town. Yes, we could have a bigger volunteer network here in town and keep our own ambulance service, but the reality is the town's not small, and there's just not a lot of people willing to take the time to train. But the response time is quick. I've seen these guys, Richford and Ennisburg, can get here very quickly with the lights and sirens on, because the minute that call moves in, the minute our features would go off, they're already on the road. So they're in Burke here by the time we don't be arriving at the station or at the speed. We, meaning our ambulance. They're quick. I mean, they're not just doing thirty miles an hour, they're flying down the road, like trying depending on the call.
Do you have a call for just...
When they come here.
Emergency or just fire?
B R. B R. Basic first aid.
Let me get my... One second. Let him...
Thank you, Brandon.
Go ahead. Okay.
Well, just wondering, we got a call, 118, if nobody knows where I live. Yeah, a call just above me, and it was snowing that day, the roads had that much slush in them, and I timed it, my radio went off, Richard and what went by, it was just fifteen minutes. They made it from Richford all the way here, you know, a good two inches of snow in the road that day. So in the village, they did it there quicker than that. And on a decent day, and so when we get a call, whatever, ambulance here, saying like the fire department, it takes us over fifteen minutes, like you say, to get to the station, and then wonder who else is going to come. You know? So I think the response time is pretty quick, like, that's it.
Any other comments or questions?
Just a question, what hospitals do you think Ennisburg handles? If I need to go to Burlington, or I need to go to Dartmouth-Hitchcock, do they, I'm struck at that Martin and Christian, do they have a mild...
You got this, man?
Protocol is St. Albans, and then from there, for stabilization. Okay?
And then?
And if it's not needed, then where are we going to go?
They don't go.
Well, yeah, but protocol calls St. Albans. It's northwest medical.
We got, Jade, take some votes again.
I would recommend that anybody who wants to continue to get an EMT certificate, particularly firefighters who already love this kind of work, they can pursue it, and I'm sure the board would be willing to sponsor you in your pursuit of your career, you know, expansion. And so if anybody wants to continue to do it, we still could do that, and we can have more people to respond as first responders, and all of that would be great, because we love it when more people show up to help us with things.
Who's going to be here today? And those are the people, the young ones, that are going to be able to help out guys that need help, that don't have the money to support them, I guess.
Any other comments on the rescue squad? Any other business to discuss? Mary?
Well, I've been attending town reading for twenty-something years, and I'm very happy, and I observe that for the first time in my memory, we re-elected every single town officer, ran on the polls, and nominated a vote, and I'm hoping that we should be celebrating that as...
I was thinking I'm going to Bernie's after this.
Any other, outside of...
A jerk is always an order.
I always read it.
All those in favor of Jerry, say aye. Look, they know.